Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the Wellington School Committee Regular Meeting for February fourteenth, two thousand and twenty-four. All members are in attendance with the exception of M.J. Burns. Please rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic from which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
All right, it is seven oh five P.M. and we are going to enter into our budget hearing. To remind committee and attendees how this works, we are going to have a motion to open the budget hearing during which Dr. Brand will give us a presentation and we'll take any committee questions and comments. Then we'll have a period for public comments from the audience related to the budget. And then we will vote to close the budget hearing and move back into the regular meeting, after which we will then vote to approve the budget. So that is the procedure. So I'm looking for a motion to open the budget hearing. Motion by Mr. Samaha, second by Mr. Fennelly. All in favor? All right, budget hearing is now open. Dr. Brand.
Great, thank you very much. Good evening, everyone. Just bring up the presentation here. The presentation I'll go through here is included in the packet for those members of the community that might be tuning in this evening. And as has been the case for all of the information up to this point in time, for anyone interested in the budget plan as it's taken shape, we work hard to make sure that all of this is part of our documentation on the school committee under the district website. A lot of this information tonight you have heard before previously, but this is an important juncture in this budget plan, which I'll talk about in just a moment. First want to start, though, this evening by acknowledging and thanking the team at large and that, I think in my mind, is really twofold. One, members of our central office as well as district leadership team, central office leadership team, of course, listed here, as well as the members of this committee. Ultimately, this budget is your budget plan, but the administration, as you know, works hard to try and provide you as a committee with a recommendation of a plan that we think is most appropriate and important to help support the resources that we believe are necessary for our programs throughout the school district. So I want to take this opportunity and thank everyone collectively, as well as the many leaders who are not listed here, for their hard work in getting us to this point in time. The budget development process has been lengthy, as you know, it always is, but we think that that's an important piece of the story that takes shape and develops over the course of time. As I've said and firmly believe many times, this is a hard thing to develop a budget for many, many months down the road, not knowing exactly what all of the needs are at that point in time. And we do our best based upon the information that we have before us that really starts to come to take shape soon after we get started in September, but the reality is things can change over the course of the number of months. You recall that on December twentieth, the preliminary budget presentation was presented here to the committee. That was the big picture, the early initial sort of overview of what we believed was coming into focus for our needs for next year. The recommended budget presentation was delivered to you on January twenty-fourth. And along the way, throughout the course of the last number of months, as we make our way into the second year of trying to put together this subcommittee to work on behalf of the committee and with the administration, the Finance and Budget Subcommittee, to really work hard at sharing more insight with committee members to make sure that this rather complicated budget plan is understood. There's a lot of moving pieces to it, a lot of elements to it. We recognize that, for many, it's not always easy to kind of grasp and walk in the world that we, many of us, often live each and every day. All of these meetings are open to the public, and I think as a committee, certainly a lot of pride in that. Anyone from our community who's interested in the budget plan unfolding can certainly join. Tonight is our presentation that serves to comply with the Massachusetts General Law regarding the preparation of annual budgets that include a public hearing, and so this effort tonight is complying with that. We talked previously about the fiscal year twenty-five, or two thousand and twenty-four, twenty-five school year, and really if there's a couple of storylines, we think that these capture those needs, the story in no particular order. We've talked previously about the fact that inflation, much like facing all organizations and operations, even as a household owner, inflation is sure driving up the costs of keeping things in session and things moving. We've talked more at length about this in the past, from everything from special education tuitions to simply the services and the contractual commitments that we have on a regular basis, of which these costs we don't control, and often is the case that third-party businesses do, and often those eclipse what our overall budget increase is in the grand total from year to year. We are absolutely still contending with the impact of COVID on learning loss. We have talked about this previously in the past, but I think that that's an important thing to point out. You recall that a year ago, we added a number of different resources, personnel, to help support this. We haven't lost sight of those, and in fact, as you know, recently with our discussion around adding a third family engagement specialist, this remains real, not just here in Wilmington, but across the country arguably. And thirdly, expectations continue, we think largely, to really position our school system unlike, I am sure, any others around really taking on more and more, or meeting the role of expectations of serving as a social service agency in a community. There are obviously lots of other supports and resources that exist to help families and students, but there is no question that going into and most certainly coming out of the pandemic, more and more is both expected of and required to help partner with families in raising young people in this current time period. So look back, just to start with, and I think that this is an important thing to point out, we've talked about this previously, but this was a slide that has been updated, but we profiled last year. And we did this because we recognize well that with what has been a decline in student population over the years, it is widely understood that what often catches people's attention is, well, why does the staffing, the total staffing for our operation, for our school district, continue to go up? This slide profiles what that reality has looked like for Wilmington Public Schools over the last decade plus. And as you can see here, the general education staff, the top line of this table, so think of this as the sixth grade teacher, or the third grade teacher, or that social studies teacher here in the high school. This is captured in this category. And you can see that, in fact, since two thousand and ten, eleven, the school district has taken steps to try and be responsive to the decline in enrollment over the years, with a total decrease of almost twenty-five. And just as a reminder for those, and those may be watching, FTE is the acronym for full-time equivalent staff. So the school district has decreased our overall general education staff by close to twenty-five FTE over the course of these many years. Of course, what follows, though, below is the real story. As a school district, as an educational entity responding to the changing needs of our student population, and we've talked about this previously, don't intend this evening to go into great detail, but as you can see here, the increases captured in special education, as well as educational assistance, are considerable over the years. And this has to do with a number of various factors, the changing population of students that we are servicing, the widespread and ongoing efforts to try and provide more programming in district to keep students here in the Wilmington Public Schools. That is showing up, and we've talked about this previously, of our decrease in out-of-district placements for students significantly declined over the course of the years, and I know well that that has to do with the ongoing efforts of Alice and her team to build programs and to keep students in district. We believe first and foremost that's best for our students and their families. There's also a financial impact that is favorable. We've talked about that previously in the past. You can also see the guidance psychologists and social workers, also a staffing contingent that has gone up slightly, six and a half FTEs over the course of the years, again, a testament to the district's effort to try and be responsive to the changing needs of our student population. So you can see overall the total staffing. You recall, we talked quite a bit about this last year going into this budget cycle, but I think that this is an important piece for certainly members of our community who might be tuning in and interested in what that looks like. The overall enrollment, of course, is a big picture of our planning, as would be the case for any school district. Nationwide, the changes in enrollment in public schools really is overall on the decline, and there's great and rapid change since the pandemic. There's lots of theories around why, there's reasons for that. That includes everything from families seeking homeschooling at higher rates than has been in the past, also pursuing private school enrollment, also for varying degrees. There's a lot of data out there on that. But I think the important point here is that Wilmington's not alone, and other districts, some to lesser extent or greater extent than others, are seeing fluctuations in enrollment. Largely speaking, you've seen that our enrollment, relatively speaking, is, I would characterize as, or describe as, flat. October first is a key date that we certify our enrollment with the Department of Education, as you know. Now, this is an interesting snapshot based upon October first numbers with surrounding communities, and you can see how Wilmington compares or contrasts, and there are some variations. You can see from Bill Ricker with a rather large increase over the last three school years. Woburn relatively high increase too, but I think it's very important to note that there were almost eighty-five students who were migrant school-aged children that Woburn has absorbed and now provides service for. You can see certainly there Wilmington has the largest of these subset of communities of a decline, but flat in some other areas for communities as well too. So it varies. I think this, to me, is what this data shows. You've seen these haven't changed in the past, the enrollment October first. This is a real detailed view for folks who must be, may be interested what this looks like by grade level enrollment across all of our schools, and as well, this includes out-of-school district enrollment. This is an important slide, there's a lot of data on this, you've seen this before, this hasn't changed, but this provides an overview of the enrollment projections going forward. Paul and his staff work hard to track this, and then consistent with the methodology or the approach that's been taken in the past, the prediction of where it appears that we are heading. Of course, this is not a science, there's lots that can change, and most certainly, we are already seeing that. Case in point, the high school and students who are returning here at a much higher rate than we've experienced in the past. In fact, not included in this projection, but since July first, we've had over thirty students who were, are Wilmington students, who have returned to Wilmington High School from various places in which they were, they started the school year, pursuing their education. So there's lots of things that can change with this, but it's best guess estimates of which we plan for. The big picture for the budget plan is, as always the case, is the necessary fiscal resources to support our operations going forward. Of course, we are largely a people business, although, as we've talked about before and we'll come back to again, there are some significant costs with non-salary items. But when people ask that question of, well, why is your budget constantly going up? We think that this tries to break down and provide a clear picture for that. We employ almost four hundred and ninety full-time equivalent staff, and that includes everything from coaches to educational assistants, educational administrators, and of course, our educators in classrooms. It's a lot of people to support the operation of eight schools and many departments. In order to open our doors in fiscal year twenty-five, or think of it as the beginning of next school year, and to keep all of those people in our employ, there are contractual requirements that we have to shape this budget around, and they're highlighted here on this slide. These are all built into our contracts, all of which are very public documents, as the committee knows. Steps and lanes profiled here, just over nine hundred thousand salary increases of a little over a million dollars, and longevity, a little over eleven thousand dollars. You can see the various changes that also took shape with the FTE adjustments that we try and make in response to the changing needs and programs and so on, but all told, a slight reduction of one point two FTEs from this fiscal year, but the increase to support all of the staff, as I mentioned, rolls up to be almost one point six million dollars. So a significant increase, just rolling the budget forward. We came up with this as a new effort to try and profile what all of these staff categories look like. I know that folks, when they think about a school district, might think first and foremost, and understandably, about the teachers in front of their children in the classroom. The reality is, it takes a whole lot more folks to spanning many, many categories that are highlighted here, and as mentioned, just a little over four hundred and eighty-eight full-time equivalent staff. So personnel changes, I will turn it over to my colleague Paul to run you through the next couple of slides.
Thank you. The numbers, and what you'll see on this slide and a couple of the other slides going forward, are similar to what we showed on the January, I think, twenty-fourth school committee meeting. Our FY twenty-four budget, we had four hundred and eighty-nine point three five FTEs. Prior to the start of this current school year, we did add an educational assistant, and we added point six ESL teachers. So we started the school year at four hundred and ninety point nine five. And during the budget process, we had some other budget changes. We had a staff increase of one point oh, some educational assistance reductions, students that aged out or unfilled positions that are no longer needed, reduction about two point eight, a teacher staff reduction of one point oh, an educational staff reduction of one point oh, and then an add-back or an add of an educational assistant for new season for next year. So our FY twenty-five budget shows four hundred and eighty-eight point one five FTEs, or a net reduction of one point two FTEs compared to FY twenty-four. This slide, the superintendent went over most of these numbers, but our FY, this is salary changes. FY twenty-four approved budget was thirty-seven point six million. Steps and lanes, little over nine hundred thousand, added to add them out, some new positions, about a hundred and eighty-one thousand four hundred and fifty-eight dollars. Salary increases in the budget, one million thirty-six thousand seven hundred and seventy dollars. Replacements, reductions in retirements add up to about a reduction of five hundred and thirty-six thousand one hundred and forty-two dollars, and longevity changes, eleven thousand two hundred and eleven. So the addition of those numbers about one point, what is one million five ninety-three nine oh five, for an FY twenty-five budget of thirty-nine million two twenty-three oh twenty-three, or four point two four percent increase over FY twenty-four.
In addition to the salary, we obviously have a number of non-salary items, so we just want to recap, as well as this. This slide here provides an overview of just a little over ten million dollars in total of non-salary expenses. Again, certainly the case that we are largely a people business, but there are an awful lot of other expenses in which we have either legal obligations or just simply obligations in general to provide the support for our services. This was a new effort to try and provide a bit more of a breakdown on this, the largest being, of course, of out-of-district education tuition and transportation of just a little over seven point four million. Curriculum instruction, professional development, obviously the heart of what we do in trying to support teaching and learning requires funding for that. You can see that amount. Information technology, student transportation in district, other special education costs, there's an array of other services from legal to many others. School office and library supplies, electricity, this is the one utility that school department itself is responsible for, the other utilities and operational expenses of our facilities fall to the town, and other operational services. So in total, you going to run through this, or was I going to?
Yeah, I can go through that. So on a non-salary budget standpoint, our FY twenty-four non-salary budget was ten million twenty-eight thousand nine hundred and twenty-seven dollars. Listed here are categories of spending that changed from FY twenty-four. I'll go through some of these. Transportation, general ed and athletic is up about almost seventy thousand dollars. That's based on the contract, the next year of our contract with a transportation provider. We did add an additional bus in the FY twenty-five budget, about a little over, almost seventy-nine thousand dollars for that additional bus. Electricity, as the superintendent had mentioned, we're projecting about a ten percent increase, around seventy-seven thousand dollars. Technology, classroom technology is up about seventeen thousand. Out-of-district tuitions, we're projecting an eight percent increase for residential and day schools, and about a six and a half percent increase for collaboratives, it's about sixty-three thousand. Out-of-district transportation reduced by fifty thousand based on historical spending and for out-of-district tuitions. I won't go through every one of these, but just some of the ones. ESL translation services, about forty-four thousand three hundred and ninety-eight dollar increase with the additional translation services that we have to provide for students. The circuit breaker offset, we mentioned in January that we were increasing that offset by about sixty-nine thousand seven hundred and seventy dollars. School office and other supplies are up about seventeen thousand one hundred and fifteen dollars, and curriculum, curriculum supplies are down about a hundred and seventeen thousand. So all told, we had about a hundred and ninety-three, two, a hundred and ninety-three thousand two hundred and sixty-seven dollar increase to our non-salary charges for a FY twenty-four non-salary budget of ten million two hundred and twenty-two thousand one hundred and ninety-four dollars, a one point nine three percent. Here's a summarization of our superintendent's recommended budget. You can see here the salary, the twenty-four was thirty-seven point six million, twenty-five recommended budget is thirty-nine point two, or one point six million dollar increase of four point two four percent. It's summarized in the previous slides. Non-salary, about ten million in twenty-four, ten point two in FY twenty-five, or a hundred and ninety-three thousand dollar increase of one point nine three. So in total, our FY twenty-four budget was forty-seven million six fifty-eight oh forty-five. Recommended budget for FY twenty-five is forty-nine million four forty-five two seventeen, or an increase of one million seven eighty-seven one seventy-two, or three point seven five Our capital budget, as we had mentioned at the January school committee meeting, again, we do a five-year plan as a request of the town. We did move some projects around a little bit to get to a number the town could support. So what's in our FY twenty-five capital plan, our Chromebook replacements for seventy-five thousand, a high school switch replacement project for a hundred and fourteen thousand, high school projectors, a hundred and thirty thousand, high school wireless upgrade of ninety thousand, and the replacement of a minivan for seventy-five thousand, for a total of four hundred and eighty-four thousand dollars. As we mentioned the last meeting, we did move capital around a little bit, and we had worked with our director of technology to determine what projects were really critical for next year, and that, and all those critical projects are included in our FY twenty-five budget. Not to say the other projects aren't critical, but they could move a year or two without any negative ramifications for the district.
So in closing, as we've talked about a number of different times, certainly operating an organization like ours, there's a lot of forces at play, and the cost of inflation and related costs are certainly those that we, like other districts, have and will continue undoubtedly to struggle with in the near future. The challenges of the pandemic, of course, are something that we've talked about, and it continues, and the impact of that, I think we will continue to see for the indefinite future. That seems to be fairly clear. It's something that we, as educators, have to continue to be mindful of. And this pressure collectively is more constraining ultimately to try and put forth the resources necessary to just maintain the status quo, or whether we want to consider this as a term of level services budget, which largely, I think the argument could be made that it is. The budget plan, though, with all of that said, going into fiscal year twenty-five, as your superintendent, I think really this captures, I think, the important pieces for our community to keep in mind with the passage of this budget and the support. It does ensure that students are in classrooms with highly qualified staff. This plan with the based enrollment that we have right now before us aligns with the contractual agreements and recommendations you have for classrooms pre-K to twelve throughout the school district. It does continue to support our efforts to educate as many students as possible in district and within our specialized programs. It provides for increasing support, we talked about this in an earlier presentation, of our growing and expanding population of English language learners in Wilmington. It continues to ensure that students enrolled in the Wilmington Public Schools have access to athletics and extracurricular activities, as well as transportation without user fees. It's certainly something that other communities can't say is the case, we can here with this budget. And it ensures our efforts to continue to try and provide, wrap around, or consider those services outside of the regular school day, as we continue to try and partner with families in new and innovative ways. Family engagement specialists, I think, is certainly the first and foremost an example of that. So a lot of information, we know that you, as a committee, have seen a lot of this before, but in compliance with, again, our need tonight, we provide you with this. And ultimately, this evening, we're hopeful for your approval of this fiscal year twenty-five budget plan going forward, and with that, we'll move on to the finance committee at the end of February to present to them as well. So happy to take any questions.
Thank you, Dr. Brand. Comments or questions from the committee? Mr. Fennelly.
Thank you. And Dr. Brand, to you and your staff, again, appreciation, because I know this work will start early in the year and go for a long time, so the presentations and the information, I always appreciate it. We talked a couple of times today about how this is, you know, a people business, right? And made a couple of references to four hundred and eighty-eight some odd FTEs. Do we know how many actual employees that is, right? Because you can hire a point six FTE or a point three FTE, right? So it's more than four hundred and eighty-eight staff members. Do we know what that number is?
Well, that four eighty-eight is based on FTEs as well, so that would include a point six, a point four, and so forth. So that would be included in that number.
Sure.
We do have other staff that aren't included in this budget, food service, as an example, our KIA's department, the four-and-a-half-to-school program, there's employees that are not included in this local budget, and that could be up to eighty employees in total, roughly.
Okay. So call it a little under six hundred. Okay. Thanks, Paul.
Mr. Turner?
First of all, thank you to you and Paul and the entire team. I know it's a tremendous amount of work, and I really appreciate it. Two things I wanted to mention. One, on slide six, where you talk about the changes to staffing, part of what I wanted to mention there was, the increase to special education represents a combination of changing needs of students, but also changing legal requirements.
Right.
And the district making the choice to do as much in district as we can, which is both good for the students and good for the budget. So the increases there for special education are essential to where our student body is today, combined with the legal environment of what the Commonwealth requires. And so it is kind of the structure of the nature of education these days. With regard to slide eleven, the point I wanted to make there was that we can see in the projections, with a sixty-one percent retention rate for the high school for the next few years, that we're actually at the bottom of the enrollment decline, it appears. It appears quite strongly that after twenty-seven, we'll start to turn back up. And if we were to apply the same retention rate that we had this year of seventy percent, we'd actually be over twenty-nine hundred students by the end of this slide in two thousand and twenty-nine. So it is, we're at least at the bottom of the decline, if not starting to trend back up, which I think is an important factor when you think about the staffing that needed to support those students. That number's headed in the other direction now. And then the last point I wanted to raise is the three point two five percent, Paul, that was the same as last year, right?
The three point seven five.
Yes, sorry, three point seven five, yes.
Yes, correct, yep.
And what we've seen from a lot of districts around the Commonwealth is that a lot of them are at much higher rates over the last several years. Some of them are even an eight, nine, ten percent, particularly districts that are negotiating new contracts. So it is an amazing testament to the ability of this team to stay at this sort of a rate, considering the environment of inflation, the environment of contracts. So I really want to stress how impressed it, impressive it is that this group is able to do that.
Thank you. Questions?
I want to follow just even a little more on what Mr. Turner said about the increased capacity for special education, because I really think that it needs to be understood that the more capacity that we develop in district for the needs of our special education students, the fewer of them we need to send out of district to outplacements, which are enormously expensive and only becoming more so. You know, last year, there was that enormous tuition increase that was approved. And, you know, you'll find essentially that districts that haven't invested in their special education capacity and are therefore unable to meet the needs of these students and are forced to send them to out-of-district placements, that is what really crushes your budget. And so I think it's important to understand that that increase of people, obviously every one of those staff members has a salary and is therefore, you know, part of our budget, but if we don't have them, that money doesn't just not get spent, more money gets spent in out-of-district placements. And so that it's, in fact, a very important and responsible way of approaching it from not only the budgetary standpoint, but also, as Mr. Turner mentioned, that it's better for the students to keep as many as we can in district if we can meet their educational needs. needs.
Other questions or comments? All right, then I will open up the hearing to any comments from the public who would like, anyone from the public who would like to comment on the fiscal twenty-five budget, if there are any. Okay? Looks like we have no one to comment on the budget. Therefore, I am looking for a motion to close the budget hearing. Motion by Mr. Fenelly, second by Mr. Samaha, all in favor? All right, and that is unanimous. So we are now back in regular session, and it remains to actually take a vote to approve the budget. So do we have a motion to approve the FY twenty-five superintendent's recommended budget? Motion by Mr. Turner, second by Dr. Bryson. Any further discussion? All right, all in favor? And that is unanimous.
Thanks very much.
And then, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Dr. Brand, thank you very much. All right, next, we have our student representative reports. So we're going to begin with the middle school representatives, Kiara O'Shea, Summer Alaperta, and Erin Body. So please come forward to the table. And before you begin, did I pronounce everyone's name correctly? No? Okay.
Kira.
Kira. Thank you, thank you for correcting me. All right, so starting over again, Kira O'Shea, Summer Alaperta, and Erin Body. Thank you very much for being here.
Happy Valentine's Day. The students of Mr. Robinson celebrated today with civics-minded Valentines. You have the right to be my Valentine, and you'd be my write-in, were just some of the civics-based Valentine students created. Wilmington High School guidance counselors will be coming to speak to the eighth graders in early March. Students have already been recommended for their core classes, but will now have an opportunity to officially choose their classes and electives. This is an exciting time for eighth graders. The ski club has been enjoying some true New England weather. The weather is seasonably cold. Let's hope Mother Nature continues to cooperate on Wednesdays. Students in grades six through eight have been enjoying the power at the Shoba Valley for some both skiing and snowboarding.
The World Culture, excuse me, the World Culture Club has been celebrating Carnival. Carnival began with the people of Brazil, and it brought it to the people of Portugal. Now Carnival is a tradition found throughout the world. Rio de Janeiro is credited as having the largest Carnival in the world. People celebrate by wearing costumes, listening to samba music, and dance celebrations. The World Culture Club focused on Brazil where it all began. Eighth-grade students have begun presenting their cultural identity projects in ELA. Students were given options of creating scrapbook memoirs or doing an oral presentation to their classes. This is a wonderful opportunity for students to celebrate diversity in their classrooms. Middle schoolers are talking about PE. Students just wrapped up on an exciting pickleball tournament. Now they know what all the fuss is about. Students have enjoyed watching Miss Livermore challenged by her students on her pickleball skills.
The student council is wrapping up their Black History Month projects and advisory. Classes throughout the middle school have the quilts proudly displayed in their wings, classrooms, and on their doors. What a beautiful way to celebrate this historic month. A big thank you to the student council members and the Wilmington Middle School PAC on another successful middle school dance. On Thursday, February eighth, WMS eighth graders had their winter dance. Students enjoyed pizza, Gatorade, and snacks, but the highlight of the night was dancing to the music of DJ Glitter. Students danced up a storm, and a good time was had by all. We are now looking forward to a spring dance for our seventh graders. Stay tuned for more details. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Are there any questions or comments from the committee?
Excellent job.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
Great job.
Thank you very much. Karen, Erin, and Summer. And next, we have our high school report. Addison?
Moving on down.
All right, well, hello, and thank you for having me again. Wilmington High School recently received the College Board AP Computer Science Female Diversity Award. There were only seventeen high schools in Massachusetts who received this award. The Redding Community has also reached out to the, the school to let them know about the kind actions of the boys varsity basketball team. Several people emailed a message that the basketball team came out early and cheered on the Redding Unified Team and were overall very kind and supportive. Last Friday, several students from the Best Buddies Club attended the Valentine's Day Dance hosted by the Woburn Best Buddies. There were several towns there, there was dinner and dancing, and it was a great success. Everyone had a wonderful time. The WHS Band also held their ski trip. Once again, it was just a really great time. Students were able to swim at the hotel and then spend the whole next day skiing with their friends, so that was awesome. The Pep Band has also received a donation from the WOW organization, which stands for We're One Wilmington. If you've attended the basketball or hockey games, you may have seen that the Pep Band now has uniforms, they have some jerseys, you know, say Pep Band on it, it's pretty cute. The jerseys were a donation from WOW and we're very thankful. The Pep Band itself has been a huge success and has received many compliments from members of both the Wilmington community and other teams. Keep an eye out for the next Wildcat Corner with Dr. Brand. He most recently interviewed leaders of the Lamplighters Drama Guild, including Adrian Moore, Zim Dehart, Sarah Kulis, and Mrs. Prindaville. Currently, they're all working on their next show, Newsies, which will, March, I believe, right? March. Should all go see it. The Science Department and Robotics Department hosted a guest, or Robotics Team, hosted a guest speaker named Mary Ann Mason Vu, excuse me, from Analog Devices. She was able to share her experiences at Analog and about her job as an application engineer. Seniors have been preparing for their upcoming internships or projects. We most recently, this last White Day, we had a presentation about what the expectations are, and on March first, they will have to have a, a report put in of what their plans are. So many have been reaching out to potential internships or brainstorming ideas for their projects. And many, many seniors have also begun to commit to colleges. Most decisions have been posted on Instagram on the account WHS Sendoff Twenty-Twenty-Four. They post where they are attending school, what their intended major is, and whether they are playing sports or not. Next week will be break, and Mrs. Kim and Mrs. Burns will be leading a group of students to Peru, where they will be visiting Machu Picchu, Lima, and Cusco. Any questions? Thank you.
Go Pep Band.
Yeah, I gotta go play.
Okay, so that brings us to our consent agenda. Are there any items in the consent agenda that anyone would like to ask about or comment on that we could, or take up separately? Or are we all satisfied with? Okay, then, not hearing, not carrying any such desire, let's take this in turns. So we are going to be approving minutes for January twenty-fourth, twenty-twenty-four regular session meeting. The Wilmington High School Program of Studies for the twenty-four, twenty-five school year, we will be accepting the Supporting Students Social, Emotional Learning, Behavioral and Mental Health and Wellness Continuation Grant for seventy-five thousand dollars. We will be approving warrants, grants eighteen and nineteen revolving thirty-three, thirty-four, thirty-five, and thirty-six, local sixty-two through seventy-one, food service thirty-seven through forty-two, circuit breaker sixteen and seventeen, and special education thirty-two through thirty-six, as well as payroll for January thirty-first, twenty-twenty-four, and February fourteenth, twenty-twenty-four. Do I have a motion? Motion by Mr. Samaha, second by Mr. Fenelly, all in favor? And that is unanimous. Thank you very much. And that brings us to the superintendent's report.
Great. Thank you. Two items tonight under the report. First, we'll start with an update from Mr. Lord, our Director of Information Technology on the tech plan. This is, this is one of the important items of many on our new strategic plan that you've approved, and Ken, I know, wanted to take an opportunity to provide you and the community with a bit of an update on that.
Thank you. We've, the technology plan committee has met several times already, and we've developed three surveys that we're sending out to gather information, and I wanted to come tonight to highlight the parent technology survey. We've sent this out through multiple Meads, but while we wanted to highlight it here at school committee, this survey has, it's a short survey, maybe, I can't remember that exactly, maybe ten questions, to gather feedback from parents about their reactions to what technology we supply, if anything's missing, things they need support on. We have similar surveys going out to staff that they've been working on. They actually had staff time during the staff meeting today to take their survey, and they'll continue taking those through the end of February. We have a student survey for grade six through twelve, we administered right after February break, and we're collecting all this data and look forward to as much feedback as we can possibly receive.
Thank you. Questions or comments from Mr. Lord?
Thank you very much.
All right, thanks very much.
The next item tonight, item six B, is Special Education Planning Presentation. I know it's not all that often that we have a presentation of the report, but folks want to come over, will Allison Moore come up? I'll just start by sort of setting the context for this. There's a memo as well as the presentation itself in the packet tonight that, that they will share with you. This is here for a couple of reasons, as I outlined in the memo, and they, they all really connect to special education. We thought it would be just a good opportunity and time period to bring them to your attention and that of the community. The first, as noted in the, in the memo, is a return to the Walker Report. It is, it was an important review and report conducted on our, on the school district and specifically the Department of Education, our Department of Education, a number of years ago. And this was one of so many other examples that kind of got tangled up with the pandemic. The work of the Walker Report came out of a recommendation from the Coordinated Program Review, as noted in the memo. The Coordinated Program Review is a, is a, an aspect of the Department of Education's oversight over school districts. And what we, what we realize is two things. One, since the time of that report and since the time that the committee, the then-school committee authorized us to move forward with bringing Walker on board, an awful lot of work has happened relative to the recommendations that that Walker Report put forth for us. But we also realize that it's really been some time since we provided an update to the school committee on that work. It's not that it's not been happening, but lots of other things have been. So we're returning here to that this evening. The second is related to a view forward to the future, and that is the Massachusetts School Building Authority Project and the work that has been ongoing relative to our planning for what those programs in that new facility will look like. It's not connected to the Walker Report, but it is connected to another document that you very soon, as a school committee, are going to have, you're going to be asked to approve in March. And like we've been doing with some other topics, we've been front-loading those to bring those to you for, for some greater depth and insight and opportunity for questions now. And that relates finally to the third item that ladies will talk about in a minute, and that's on where we think we're going in the future, or hope to be going in the future relative to special ed. So thanks both for being here.
Good to see everybody. You want to do it? Am I going to?
You probably could, you talked.
Okay. I think Dr. Brand just did like my first three slides, but that's okay. So we'll do a very quick overview. I thought I might just start talking a little bit about the review process through the Department of Ed. At one point, going back to the sixteen through nineteen school years, was called the Coordinated Program Review. The initial kind of upload for information, and I'm just going to jump ahead one slide, was the seventeen, eighteen school year, so the district uploads a lot of information regarding special education, ELL, and civil rights. Their onsite was the seventeen, eighteen school year, with the report coming out in eighteen, with the action plan kind of starting that summer of eighteen forward, if that's the way of thinking about it. There were fourteen partially implemented indicators resulting in corrective action. Some were special ed, some were civil rights, some were ELL. There were a number of special ed indicators that were partially implemented, a number that were full implemented, but a number that needed corrective action. The most notable of them was that at that point in the seventeen, eighteen school year, one of the expectations under the Department of Ed is that you're kind of always reviewing on an ongoing basis the special education programming that the district offers. And at that point, it had been over a decade prior, was the last time we could find at least a report that the department had been evaluated. So we contracted with Walker Consultation, and they essentially became, the report that they generated became known as kind of the notorious Walker Report, so to speak. So I just want to jump back one, just because it ties into kind of what we just went through with. So now the process for oversight is considered tiered focus monitoring in the district through the Department of Ed. The self-assessment was last year for us. The onsite was last week for us. And then the next step is the report that should be out in about sixty days, actually, and phase three would be either no findings or a corrective action plan. That's kind of, kind of the process, so to speak, for now. They were here last week.
So we're taking a breath.
Yes. After a couple of months of flurry. Okay, so the Walker Report consisted of kind of a, the Walker Process consisted of a number of different things. Their actual onsite occurred during the eighteen, nineteen school year, and it included everything from a review of records that they pulled based on their interviews that they conducted with a number of staff administrators and parents, so they would say, kind of would like to look at your, you know, students in language-based IEPs, or give me an idea of a student that has transition services, kind of pulling the documents that go with kind of our programming. They observed pretty much, they observed all strands of our programs, but not necessarily every single classroom in that strand, if that makes sense. And met with, their meetings were pretty extensive. They met with parents, educational assistants, teachers, some gen ed teachers, administrators in the district, CPAC. So it was pretty extensive, the evaluation that they did at that time, and their resulting recommendations. We did have the pandemic, as you know, kind of hit about a year after the report came out. So the report came out in about September of nineteen. So we kind of, we're making good progress, it slowed a bit, but I'll kind of review all that in a second. So they really identified four areas of focus. If you go through the report, which is on our website, still is on our website, and those four areas of focus were, at that point, our eligibility rate for students in special education was about nineteen point five, which was above the state average. Focus area two was that our special education, looking at our special education programming and services, looking at continuum throughout the district, looking at the kinds of supports that are available, the kinds of PD that's available, looking at, at that point, if we think back to two thousand seventeen, eighteen, we had a number of programs that were just getting off the ground. So, you know, since about the sixteen school year, we've added ten programs to the district. The organizational support and administrative support for the department, which we'll talk a little bit about some of those changes, and then outcomes of students with disabilities. So then they made individual recommendations, so that's kind of how I did the presentation, just organizing it the way they did. And I'll go through them, and if you, if you want to ask questions during or after, I'm okay with that. One of their recommendations was, one of their concerns was that there was not enough, given my position essentially was over special ed and a number of other departments, that there was not really enough bandwidth to deal specifically with special education. So the coordinator position came directly out of that. And we were able to kind of get that online. Actually, we're in the process of doing that when this report came out, because I think Dr. Brand had also recognized that that was a need. So pretty much right around when they, when that position was posted, was when the report was coming out. So we kind of were, at the same time, making the same recommendations. We, they talked about moving team chairs to become administrators and evaluators of special education staff. So we not only added two team chairs, which we did in the summer of twenty, but then they became evaluators last summer and administrators, so they're administrative positions at the moment, which prior they were unit A positions. Ongoing professional development for special education eligibility, that was directly related to the very high rates of eligibility in the district. There was a number of reasons for that. I think in part, we didn't have enough team chairs to necessarily run all the meetings, so it was very difficult to have there be consistency in the eligibility process when in one school, it might be a school psychologist, in one building, it's a counselor, in one building, it's a team chair that's running the meetings. So with the addition of those positions, that was one of the things that kind of took care of itself a little bit, and making sure that they were highly trained, knowing how to do eligibility, making sure that there was consistency in, in their role and what the expectations were. We review that more, continues to review that yearly with all the team chairs, but also all the special education teams that we meet with on a monthly basis. We did bring in Alan Bloom, who's pretty well-known in the field of math, in Massachusetts in the field of special education. He had done a number of trainings on kind of helping us revamp the way people were writing IEP goals and objectives, making them more measurable, making them very student-specific, as well as the way the... as well as the way the accommodations pages were written for students on the IEP to make them more user-friendly. We also are using him currently for the new IEP as well. We added an additional BCBA. At that point, we had two. We added a third, which was a great addition because we, at that point, were also adding programs. So they kind of went together. Right at the beginning of the report, we were using the ACE curriculum, for those that are not familiar. So the ACE curriculum is a curriculum that's developed by the New England Center for Children, which is the premier out-of-district placement in the world, really, for students with autism who require that kind of a setting. And so our programs, our Strides programs, which are our programs for students that require that kind of programming in district, were just at the beginning of using the ACE program. And at that point, we didn't, they really needed to take data and run the trials with the students on iPads, which we also were in the process of getting. So to date, all of our Strides programs utilize the ACE data. They utilize the ACE programming and they all have iPads to be able to utilize that data. That's kind of done with fidelity. We do, we do yearly trainings at the beginning of each year because we do have, and all of our educational assistants are also trained, not just the teachers. And we do yearly trainings and sometimes middle-of-the-year trainings when needed because we have sometimes some changeover in staff, just to make sure that the fidelity with that programming is ongoing with, in each of the programs. When this program was done, it was kind of an unusual situation. We had a loss of a staff member at the high school the year that this was done. So we had a vacancy in one of our specialized programs. So when they came to do the onsite, there was a number of staff members helping out to kind of fill that void because we're having difficulty filling the position. So they made some recommendations to just look at our life skill and strides model at high school, which we have since done, but we're kind of in a strange position with the loss of a staff member during the course of that year. But we've had both programs, they continue to, they collaborate when needed. BCBA continues to be part of the methodology of that program.
Can you quickly define a BCBA? I'm sure not everyone watching is aware.
So they're board-certified behavior analysts. They are really, in our district, utilized to support our students who have behavioral challenges by helping to identify data collection interventions, monitor the interventions utilizing data, adjust if needed. And so they support most of our sub-separate programs in the district, as well as some students that are in inclusion settings as well. But the bulk of their work is our, our sub-separate programs in the district. They're trained in data collection and behavioral interventions, pretty much exclusively. That's their background.
And just saying, they're district-wide, so they don't belong to any one program?
Right.
Or any one building, the three are district-wide through all the buildings?
Yeah.
As needed.
Yeah. In the 2019 school year, we had about 16 one-to-one paraprofessionals. We currently have five that are one-to-ones, and then we have another three that are shared one-to-ones that are in, so they're not one-to-ones, I would say they're kind of two-to-ones with students in the district. And so, you know, the Department of Ed releases technical assistance advisories, which we review yearly with not only the administrators, but also special ed teams and all the teams at our professional development that we do, the, excuse me, the department meetings that we do monthly with them. So it's reviewed at least yearly. Sometimes it's reviewed more than yearly.
And ongoing reminders.
If people are forgetting that it exists. Yeah, ongoing reminders about what the expectation is about, because it's a highly restrictive intervention and it needs to be, another decision that needs to be made with data. So. At the point where this evaluation was done, the middle school did not have a special education teacher in every house at every grade level. And so there was sharing a, an educational assistant and kind of would flip-flop when needed. It was a little bit of inconsistency in terms of the services that were being provided to students. And so at this point, as of, I believe, the summer of 21, we have a, I believe it was 21, yeah, summer of 20, 20, sorry, we have a special education teacher at every house in every grade level, if that makes sense, for inclusion. And then we have our programs. The other recommend, another recommendation was looking at that point, remember when they were, our social-emotional program was just getting off the ground when this evaluation was done? And we really only had a couple of classrooms in the district, and we had just opened kind of our elementary program. So made the recommendation for looking at social-emotional programming. We have a clean school consult program we've had pretty much since the beginning. They provide a tremendous amount of support to not only our program teachers, but also all our clinical staff that are connected with those programs. It's focused around typically cognitive behavioral therapy, helping students to identify and develop actions to identify what might be triggers, what are challenges to them, what actual resources do they have and things that they can use to support them emotionally or behaviorally. We obviously, the, we've, all the programs have zones of regulations. PBIS is a component of that because a lot of the school buildings, they utilize PBIS and then they build in kind of maybe a higher-level structure connected to PBIS in our programs so that they're connected. They don't seem disconnected, some of the expectations in a classroom for what might be happening in the school. And then we've added other things like panorama data as well. So then, I should have said, the, Walker kind of separated the, the recommendations into kind of special ed recommendations and then some other district things. So I'm just going to go over some of the other district things. They also identified that our IST process needed improvement. This year, the IST team was able to roll out a new flow chart, pre-referral documentation. I believe Christine has, I don't know, someone brought on Open Architect, so we have all our data kind of at the ready to look at what students, all students' data in one place. And the handbook for the IST process has been completed and rolled out. So that's a huge, that was, I would say, one of the things that got kind of a little bit put on hold with the pandemic, to be completely honest with you. They noted a lack of tiered interventions, lack of consistency in math and reading interventions. And I know that our K-5 is in year three with math and reading interventions, and six through eight is in year one. And that began about the fall of 2021. We did a, the next one down is updating 504 and training in 504 procedures. We had our entire district trained at our opening day by our attorney, all in the auditorium to review 504, the legal expectations around 504. Who's responsible for what as it relates to, actually, special ed and 504? He covered in that. And this, I think, is an ongoing thing, right? As staff changes and student needs change, this is something we kind of are always looking at with the staff so that they're clear about abilities. We also do it at the beginning of every school year for the mentor training. So we cover this for all of them, so they get it at least once a year. And the manual is actually currently being updated again with some of the legal changes that have happened with 504. Professional development on D cap, they also recommended. So our district curriculum accommodation plan, so that all staff at that point in kind of time here, the D cap was not a live document necessarily. I think that a lot of staff knew it probably existed, but didn't really utilize it, feel like it was something that they were even familiar with. I think there's been a lot of work. It says fall of '22 and '23. I will tell you, it goes back as far as Sean Gallagher being here, where we did a lot of PD with the staff around what the D cap is, not needing permission to do D cap accommodations, understanding that it's all, all students have the ability to access those, all teachers have the ability to access those. And I think that is an ongoing conversation, I feel like, every year at staff meetings. We kind of pushed our special ed teams to start talking about that, too. Even for referral for students, making sure, you know, what we're doing that's D cap-related is clear, what students have access to. So parents are clear, you don't necessarily need a plan, whatever that might be, to get these accommodations, per se. I think that, in my opinion, will be an ongoing, never-ending conversation, I think, that just as the D caps evolve, because they will, I think, as the students' needs evolve, but it will continue to be a conversation with staff, also with the changeover in staff, I feel like, that we have.
I was going to say, I meant to bring it in my bag, so I won't leave the table to go get it. But, I mean, the information is online, of course, on our website, but we also, there's a hard copy, you know, available booklet resource that's available to teachers, it's in their conference rooms, it's available for easy access. So it's not just an idea, it's an actual resource.
Yep.
Material, so.
When this report was also completed, if, for those of you that were here, if you remember, so PBIS, when it began in the 16-17 school year, when I started as behavioral health coordinator, it only started on one side of town. So it started at the, the Boutwell, the Shawshene and the West. It got kind of a little bit expanded into the middle school partway through that year as kind of a very beginning. And then we had some bandwidth, we were able to extend it over to the, the Wildwood, kind of initially, the second half of that year. So the recommendation was to expand it. We're still continuing to do PBIS. PBIS looks different at each building, but all buildings have a team, they all have coaches or have different levels of coaches. Some are on, you know, year eight, so they're kind of running their own PBIS process, and they just kind of need fidelity checks and kind of assessments through coaches. Others need a little more support to kind of keep the teams going. The MARC curriculum, which is the Massachusetts Aggression Reduction Center through Bridgewater State, which is our anti-bullying curriculum, has been added to the district in 2021. It was used without consistent fidelity in the years prior to that, but in 2021, it was identified as that is what we're using district-wide. And obviously, we added panorama. I know you guys know that. Most of you are part of that. I apologize, the A is not here. The other recommendation that they made was to provide PD for principals and school administrators in matters relating to students with disabilities and those with significant school challenges. I feel like this has morphed kind of every year. We do ongoing training at our district leadership team from everything, from what principals' responsibilities are as it relates to, let's say, students with special education, to bullying, harassment expectations, and what the process is for that. Kind of anything connected with our office, we end up doing some kind of training with The, we've done, we had a fairly extensive UDL training and inclusive practices training that was supposed to be done in summer of 2020. It took us till fall of '22 to get that out, just because of the world at the time. And we've had our, A was our, Staff Council has done a tremendous amount of training with the administrators on, you know, everything from special education requirements through some of the mass general law discipline issues. Most of our principals have also attended chronic absenteeism, which is obviously in some restorative practices training. So I feel like this is, while it has a date on it, this is something that's ongoing, right? In order to keep, I think, everybody current and moving forward and responsive to what's happening with the needs. A little redundant, but the number seven was to measure progress and efficiency in SEL. We do that, we trained all staff on castle competencies. It's happened a few times. The first was in 1920, and then the second that I can think of was a year ago, the fall, so '22. And we use panorama to assess students twice a year. They actually noted that the length of the staff workday should be included. So I know that that has occurred, but one of her concerns was the difficulty in meeting to co-plan, given the constraints of the school day. So I think the, adding the 15 minutes, why maybe not directly, this being the reason, I think this was kind of in people's thought process about why would we be doing that? And then the reviewing academic rigor across all special education programs. We have done a tremendous amount of not just consultation, but also just looking at our own programs and training. I think this, to be upfront and honest, is the ongoing for programs. The ongoing struggle is balancing the students' needs that might be social, emotional, or might be in another area, behavioral, with making sure that the academic rigor is also high. So that balance is oftentimes a struggle, particularly in specialized programs where students maybe don't have the access to general education that other students do. And so making sure that we try to not only identify curriculum if needed, or the supports that are needed to find a kid's entry point and make sure that we're holding the rigor high. So this is an ongoing thing. I don't think this is a training and kind of a step, if that makes sense.
Maybe, Alice, you want to pause there before you go on MSBA to see if there are any questions?
Just one, one quick acronym IST. I know I should know that one.
Instructional Support Team.
Thank you.
Once known as SST?
Yep. Now known as SST.
No, not known as SST.
I think it's, that was their language they used in the report.
Thank you. That helps, thank you.
So it's the referral process, okay.
Thank you.
Dr. Bragaldi?
Yep.
Cool. Thank you. So thanks for going over this. Seems like a lot of work has taken place over the past couple of years, a lot of good programs implement, have been implemented. So I'm just wondering, is there any data on the outcomes with the instituted initiatives? Like, another way to say it is, are you seeing any improvement in student outcomes or quality of student services with all these initiatives that are added in? So where I'm coming from is, it's great that we're doing these things, but are we actually having data to back up these are helping, you know?
Yep. So I think, you know, when you look at some of the easier ones to capture, right? We were at 19.5 eligibility in the district when this report was done, which exceeded the state average by almost .9. I think the state average was 18.6 at that point. And we were down to 17, and then last fall went up to 17.6, which I think a lot of districts were seeing post-pandemic. We also had a lot of kids move in last year, which was a little bit unusual for us. A lot of them had IEPs. So I think that's one data point. Other things that we typically look at is, we look at the students that we have that are in programs and seeing kind of what their, like, three-year trajectory is. So are those students staying with us, or are they entering programs and then going out of district? Our numbers of students have stayed, they're not low, but lower than what we were when we were at, about 90 kids out of district. So while it might not work for every child, we have a lot of children that are maintaining in our programs or going less restrictive as a result of the services that we're providing. I think the other kind of data point that we also take a look at is graduation in four years with an IEP. And that data has been very solid over the last few years. So means students are then passing the MCAS, right, that have an IEP. They're meeting their high school graduation requirements, they're doing it within the same time as their peers, and we're not having horrible dropout, right? That's not an issue necessarily here, but... And then there are, there are other kind of smaller data that we look at. So the addition of, let's say, Maura's position, right? I think that we've been able to take care of some of the compliance issues that were identified in the original report, which is huge. I think we got decent feedback at last week's exit meeting for the tiered focus monitoring. And so for me, those are huge data points. I think the ones that are harder to, to get, so to speak, are the impact of, let's say, some of our social-emotional programming on an individual student's social-emotional functioning. You can measure it based on behavior or external things like, you know, suspensions, timeout use, things like that. It's harder to actually measure whether that's making an actual change in their social-emotional functioning, if that makes sense?
Yep. Yeah, no, thanks. I think it would be interesting, you know, maybe at a later date, maybe we can kind of look at some of that information, like the, how you said, I think the graduation rates, the MCAS passing and everything like that, for all the kids in IEP, that would be great to see. Is that an upward trajectory?
Yeah.
Is it flat or not? And then kind of see that feedback loop between what we're doing here and seeing the outcome for the students.
Yeah. Wilmington's pretty high, their graduation rate with students with disabilities comparatively.
Yep.
Which is good. So, and we don't have a very high dropout population either.
Yep.
Which is also very good. So I think it's making sure that our students are doing it in four years and doing it with MCAS passing.
Yeah.
Which historically, we do pretty well at.
Yep. No, that's great. And then to follow up, another thing you said, too, would be interesting to see is how many students kind of enter in the district, need all these services, and then how many do require outplacement, and then how many do we keep in the district because we're providing a, you know, adequate level of service for them at the same time? And that kind of ties into the earlier conversation we had with the budget. So it could really highlight how well-functioning the social services department is working.
Yeah. I think that, that's actually probably an easy one because in the years, and I would have to pull the data, I don't have it off the top of my head, but at one point, so it must have been, I came in and, I come into this position in 17, 18, we were at about 90 kids out of district. And it took a little bit. But for the last few years, even with the pandemic, we're hovering mid-50s, mid-60s.
And projecting about 57.
Right. And so it, you know, there's a little bit of, like, kids move in, not a lot I can do about that, right? And there are some students who just require an out-of-district placement, that there's not enough support in the district. And our numbers of programs have kind of grown, they haven't shrunk down to the place at which we don't have kids in our programs, and we have a lot of kids out. So that, to me, is telling also that we have, you know, kids in programs, we have kids also in programs that are less attached than they were, so they're more inclusion. And we have students that are making progress because our numbers haven't climbed back up necessarily, you know, in a, in a great way. They're going to ebb and flow. It's just part of the process.
Okay, great. No, thank you. Thanks for answering questions.
My recollection is that when we were, when we were doing this review, there was not much that we weren't also internally aware of. That it was great, great to have the external reviewer come in and verify and corroborate it's like the, the steps that we were taking. But you'd already mentioned that we had, you know, we're in the process of creating[1799.23] It's like the, the steps that we were taking, but you'd already mentioned that we had, you know, we're in the process of creating the special education coordinator position.
Yep.
But my recollection was that, you know, we had been, I mean, part of what caused us to, you know, to commission this report was because we were already thinking about our processes and our special education programming. And that we had identified many of the things that were later also identified through the report.
Yeah, there was not a single surprise in anything that she recommended. I think I was also part of the process, but we were also coming off the heels of the coordinated program review, so I was not surprised. And some of them I think were great to point out, kind of larger scale district issues around IST and things like that that we needed to tackle as a district. That were directly feeding into our special ed eligibility rates, for sure.
Dr. Bryson?
Thank you. This is helpful. It's always good to get a refresher, see where we are. I see a lot of special ed staff training, getting training. And I, I know that there's sort of this opening day stuff for, for classroom teachers and content specialists, but is there a plan for sort of more embedded PD or is that happening that I just don't, that it doesn't seem clear? It seems more like these checkbox train, like we did this, we did this, we talked, but like is there sort of like in the moment coaching happening with teachers who aren't special ed licensed?
Yeah.
But obviously have students who they're serving in their classes. And I'm thinking, obviously in terms of classroom at the elementary level, but really in content expertise in the middle and high school level. So you have a math teacher, you know, someone who specializes in that, but may not have the special ed license.
Right.
But I don't, many, I mean, some of our teachers are dual licensed, but not a, not a lot.
Yeah.
Whereas in other districts, we might have, like Boston, you have triple license, you know? And not that I say the license makes you an expert, but having that expert, a little bit more of that expertise can make that work so much easier, right? Because you already have some of these strategies. So I guess I'm curious, we're checking the, I know we're doing these things, but is there a plan for this embedded PD to really help content experts?
So I think that continues to be our struggle, to be completely honest with you, I think PD in general. But then when we're talking embedded PD, it's the people to be able to do that becomes the challenge here, right? So one-off PDs are even still difficult, kind of with our PD structure. For our department, for the special ed department, I'll just back up one second. We meet with all the elementary, MORA, myself, the team chairs run an elementary special education meeting for every building every month. The contractually, the middle school and high school is four, five times a year, four times a year. It's like every six weeks kind of is how it ends up being. So we review a lot of our special ed pieces there. That's where our PD ends up being. It's really almost all PD, pretty much those meetings. Sometimes a little bit of check-in about things, but it's pretty much all PD. Running through the Department of Ed changes to technical assistance advisories that come out, kind of things that kind of will directly affect their work. The P, the other piece is very hard. So we have a SEEM inclusion coach who does work in classrooms, working with gen ed and special education teachers to work on our more challenging kiddos that have inclusion, but might be struggling a bit more. And being able to help both sets collaborate as well as identify kind of what the entry point for kiddos and help them through that. It's, we don't have anybody in district per se that does that necessarily. So we're using outside people. We have Landmark doing the same thing, kind of in the reverse way. So looking at kids that are in programs that are pushing in to general education classrooms and then they're providing that support to kind of both staff. That is the challenge.
Additionally, to add to that too, we have had team chairs go to staff meetings, weekly staff meetings. And we've kind, we've kind of working with principals to make that happen as often as they can. Talking about some of the special ed procedural things from, you know, writing a good ed A or a good ed B, which is part of the reports that go home for an evaluation, the history and then the, the general classroom experience.
Yep.
And then at times when the, when special education teachers go to team meetings, just general, you know, planning time meetings, that's kind of on the spot, kind of training, coaching about the students on their teams and things like that, so.
I would, if I could, I would say stay tuned, Dr. Bryson and committee, we're, we're in the process, I think, as you mentioned around putting together our need to submit to the Department of Ed's Student Opportunity Act. More, more to come on that, but we, we are going to be taking a look at expanding what I think you're getting at in terms of what does this training look like for all of our teachers, not just special education. And Ms. Elliott and I were just meeting earlier today and our central office team will be later in the week. This will be, I think, one of the areas based upon data that we need to go in this direction. So more to come on that.
Can I just ask one more question? Chair.
Recognize for a second question.
Thank you. So that's helpful to know. Thank you. There's just two things. One, the emphasis on executive functioning, I didn't, I mean, there's pieces of it in there.
Yeah.
Obviously I see a lot of the, the social emotional piece and sometimes the executive functioning gets wrapped up in there. But a lot of families will come and talk to me about that sort of specific piece, right? Who's, who's supporting teachers to understand that piece, you know, the ADHD, the anxiety, how that really trend? So I guess I would just love to sort of see what our plan is moving forward to support that. To, to a degree where I think we're seeing it in other places where they're, they're starting to really sort of take, like it's become the new, not the new SE, but it's, it's sort of this new branch where teachers are like, oh wait, there are also all these strategies for that specifically. So I think that would be a great direction for us to move in. And then I just think about, you mentioned Landmark and I know that, you know, Landmark also partners with universities and so actually PU's over there helping with their licensing. Some of those teachers may not have, might not hold the initial license and so they work. But I just wonder if there's some space to work with local universities to sort of maybe to support teachers who are interested in getting that dual license. It's so hard when you're teaching full-time to then go to a place to do that, but sometimes universities come to you and they run it if there's enough people who are interested at a pretty, I mean, at a pretty good discount. So I just wonder if there's a way to, because as much PD as you do, I think we're not in some of that coursework and we're not doing some of that and we're not getting coached by supervisors in the moment with our teaching. It's sort of hard to, to learn that. I mean, it's such a, it's such a complex skill. So there's just some thoughts I have, but that's all I got. If that was a question, I guess it was more of a.
Mr. Turner?
Sorry. Thank you. One more quick question to follow up to some of these. There's a lot in this that's very focused internally into the processes and procedures within the district. Was, was there anything called out within Walker or Elsewise about the engagement with the parents into the process or through the process with, with children that are either in, in any of the different programs? Was there anything specific to the way the district engaged with the parents that needed improvement, needed changing? Or was it, was that not part of the focus at all?
Not off the top of my head, no. They were more, I think they were really more charged with looking internally to, you know, look at things like compliance, making sure our programming runs a gamut of offerings and they're, you know, completed with fidelity and meeting, actually having our IEPs match kind of what supports we're providing for kiddos. And at that point, you know, much like today, we had a fully functioning CPAC. They met with CPAC, yeah.
Okay.
So I don't know that that was a concern at that point. Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Sure. Okay. So we've talked about the past. We've talked a little about the present, kind of overlapping with the past. Let's talk about kind of where we're going. The, one big hanging thing that Walker talked about and she referenced it a little bit as it relates to the extra time for the school day was looking at co-planning, co-teaching. And that is something we've talked a lot about over the last few years. Something else that's been very hard to get off the ground with kind of the interruption of, of the pandemic. And so when we look at a couple of the things that are coming online, we have the new building project. We also have kind of the intersection of how that would be looking with us looking to develop a plan for co-teaching. So let's talk about the new program, the new building and then we'll jump into co-teaching if that's okay. So, and not to, you know, for those of you that are in the room, I know a lot of you are in the room for the MSBA project. The design in the building philosophy, when we talk about kind of what that building is going to look like, is integrating more of the special services, whether it's special education or, you know, guidance staff, whatever it might be, school counseling staff, into the buildings, into the hallway. So they're not necessarily in a separate location, that they're kind of integrated into the life of the hallways. Part of that is looking at classrooms that have breakout spaces, kind of attached to them or near them, making collaboration and the integration of services with students kind of much easier. Having the, potentially a special educator who has an office space or a room that's adjacent to the classrooms that they're assigned to essentially be connected to and provide services for. And then having flex spaces in the hallways when needed for other service providers potentially like OT, PT, speech, people that are, you know, working in classes as well as potentially doing pullout with students. Making the ability to just, you know, collaborate and work together for student needs a little bit easier. One of the impacts of opening a new building, and I just want to back up about our special ed, our strides classroom. So if you think about our strides classroom, our strides program is for students that have often require applied behavioral analysis as a methodology of instruction. And that require the, a highly structured program throughout their school day. Currently those students start at the Wildwood. They then move to the Shawshine. And then they go to the West, the middle school and the high school. I think that was, that was predates me, but I suspect it was due to the space constraints of the Boutwell. And that the Shawshine and West are the handicap accessible elementary schools. So it was impossible to put the program at the Boutwell because of the constraints with the programs that are there and how small the, the number of classrooms are. And it was impossible to leave them at the Wildwood side because the Woburn and the North are not handicap accessible. So these students who are typically are students that have the most difficulty with transitions, right? The most difficulty socially connecting to other kids, create relationships with kids at the Wildwood. And then we asked them to shift in first grade to a completely different group of students. So I thank those parents very much for being able to hang with us over all these years. But one of the things I think we as a district would really like to solve is that concern. If we were to open a pre-K through three building, right? And this would be something we'd have to look at. But even if it was pre-K through three, we would have potentially those students go to the new building, and this is an error, it should say one for pre-K through three at the West. There would be one program then at the West, then the students would go to middle school and high school. If we opened a pre-K through five, then all the students that are in the strand, pre-K through five, would be at the new building. There would be none on the other side of town. This building is going to be completely handicap accessible. It's going to have play structures that are, I'm assuming, are going to be able to accommodate students with disabilities. The building itself is going to be set up so that the services that these kiddos provide, that they, that they're provided inside the hallways are going to have the service providers kind of with them in the hallways. They'll have access to them. They'll be less transitions kind of to a different part of the building. The hope is that this just provides a greater sense of service and support for those kiddos. Questions about that? I know there are a few questions, yes. And there's an error on the slide. Which we've gone back and forth about today.
And not fix it, that was on us, yeah.
One of the things I do want to kind of highlight and amplify is, is we've talked a lot, there's a lot of things to talk about with, with the different possible configurations on the north side of town. But the idea of building a new building that meets all of the goals with inclusive practices, with, with the way classrooms should be to accommodate these children in the best possible way, and then say, okay, that's only for these first couple of years or these first three or four years. And then you're going to go back to a space that's not as accommodating for a couple of years and then head off towards the middle school. It seems like there are a lot of reasons to lean towards a pre-K through five. But this is one where we would clearly have a negative impact on some of our most vulnerable children if we went with pre-K, K or pre-K three, because then they'd have a transition to something that was less accommodating. And so I, I think this, this one piece of it is, is very, very important for people to understand that it's, it's an important part of special education in the district is having the right sort of facilities and then being able to expand them into the future as well. So thank you for, for highlighting it.
Yep.
Dr. McCallie?
Yep. So just a question, how many students are in strides right now and then?
Through fifth grade or all the way up?
Well, I would say right now.
Thirty-two through fifth grade.
Through fifth grade, okay.
Could be capped at like 48, based on the number of classrooms we have currently.
Okay. And then if I understand, looking at the slide, if let's say we build the pre-K through five, we'll need six classrooms for all the stride students?
Currently, yep.
Okay.
Yeah.
So, thank you. So my question actually now pivots to Dr. Brand. Is this something that is being talked about at the MSBA working team right now and under consideration?
It is. And the reason that it's here, and just for everyone's sake, as well as those watching, within about a month, you are going to have this draft program plan for this new school. We are, we're not fast-tracking it. We're exactly where we need to be. And, and that is seeking the committee's approval by the end of March. And so you will see in this plan that there will be a whole section on special education planning. And this is just a really superficial kind of overview of what this is looking like. But we wanted to give you again some, some context for what you're going to see as part of this plan. There's been a lot of thought that's gone into that. It absolutely is one of the many pieces leading to what the overarching design is taking shape to be and the size of the school is taking shape to be. So short answer is absolutely yes, but there's, this is more, this is clearly a little trickier and more complicated than just how many grade two classrooms will we need, right? And, and, and this is an important piece that I'm recognizing requires more awareness from a community member to understand all of what we're just sort of sharing in a quick couple of minutes here. But it does lead to additional square footage.
Yep.
In the school, but as we've talked about here, you get a sense of sort of why that might be and how this all fits together. Let alone if it's not a pre-K to five, as Mr. Turner, you said, what the implication of that looks like, so.
And there are other spaces that we've talked about as part of the project connected to this program strand as well as other students with disabilities like motor room. The opportunity to have students that right now, you know, a lot of these students have OT and PT. They also have some sensory needs. And so having a space where that can occur on a regular basis provides consistency for them, but also better programming. Right now it's a little bit of sharing gym space in some cases, sharing hallroom space in some cases if a student can't transition to the, to the gym potentially. So, you know, one of the things we've talked about in the building is also adding a space like that for students, which would be great.
Thank you.
Sure. Yep. One of my slides is out of order, but I talked about it.
There you go. Co-teaching. So that's, so this is my first time presenting, so I know, I feel like I'm already stumbling on my words I have to even open up. I really am comfortable talking about co-teaching. It's a passion in my, in my field of being a special educator. I've, I've been a co-teacher successfully. So moving forward, this is where we're going, right? This is where we're heading, but we can't get there without taking the steps to get there. So we can't jump right in. There's a lot of reasons to take our time, pause and think about where we're going. So currently, Alice had mentioned, we have Emily Pat from SEEM who is a co-teaching, she's a consult for inclusion and co-teaching. So we've been utilizing her as a resource already. And so we continue to do so. So I'm kind of, kind of look at the information there on the slide. So the district has a shared inclusion coach, that's Emily Pat, and she's been with us with the teachers, administrators on students to improve our inclusive practices. We've been providing PD and UDL and inclusive practices. And so we don't have co-teaching happening everywhere. We have pockets of co-teaching in various places in the bill, in the district. There's not one place, not one school that it's happening. And so we need to become more equipped in getting to that places. So one of the recommendations is to, and to move forward, I feel like I'm stumbling on my words, so I apologize. No, this is me going, I'm, I'm being vulnerable right now, but here I am. So the question is, what is co-teaching, right? What is co-teachers defined? And it's more than just inclusion, right? So when you have, inclusion is one model of co-teaching. So co-teaching is a collaborative teaching approach. You have two or more educators working together to plan, to deliver, to assess instruction to a group of students. It involves shared responsibilities and expertise with the goal of providing a more inclusive and effective learning environment. And there's a number of reasons why we would move forward to this co-teaching. It's considered best practice in the research to support the students with disabilities. It's a DESI recommendation with a priority around the inclusion and least restricted environment. It's recommended from that Walker report that we've talked about. And it's the benefit, and we've talked about, it's been mentioned, having two specialists supporting student learning. And, and, and so two, two teachers in, in, in a classroom experience is obviously going to meet the support of, of the students. You're going to have the special education teacher who is a strategist, right? Who has the, the expert in the, in the strategies of how to have access to the instruction. Then you're going to have the classroom teacher who's the expert in the content and working together to meet the needs of the students. So.
Can I?
Yeah, please, please do.
So I think when we're looking at an action plan, right? We're looking at, we're looking at a tremendous amount of training. We're looking at a tremendous amount of training for everybody. General education teachers, special education teachers, getting some of those documents that are live, but maybe need to be bolstered, like the use of de-cap accommodations kind of live. accommodations kind of live into the classrooms, just as a basic practice for everybody, right? And then we're looking at things like structure. Co-planning takes time, making sure that that time is available in the scheduling of the schools, so to speak, to move there. And then I think the big piece is determining what that looks like. Not all students will necessarily, just because they have an IEP. I think sometimes people think you have an IEP, you should end up in that classroom. It's just identify what students would really benefit the most from a co-teaching model. And then that's going to drive staffing, frankly. So, so there's, I think, a lot of steps that we're looking at and coming up with an action plan. We've met with Emily Pat and, you know, on and off over the years also, but really more recently, also with the MSBA project to look at, helping us to develop an action plan regarding this. And part of that is going to be PD, which I, I don't know if you're, we're going to talk a little bit about that, but I think in the SOA, but it's coming up in the next couple of weeks.
Yeah. So, we, a lot of information thrown your way on, on connected topics to special education and, but we, again, we thought it was an opportunity to try and do so, sort of looking back in the rearview mirror in the Walker report, and where, as you all said, where we're, we're heading here. We mentioned co-teaching specifically because, back to the MSBA plan and the program plan that you'll see, it's with intention that we're going to include that in there. It's, there's a long narrative section that you'll see in this plan, and, and it does make mention of this. We think it's, for the reasons outlined here, an important direction that we're going to go. It doesn't necessarily dictate space in a new school facility. It could dictate staffing, but more importantly, it's part and parcel of what we think the direction is that we should be building into this program plan. So you'll see and you'll hear more of that in this document that will be coming your way in, in, in not that many weeks down the road, but we just wanted to give you a sense of sort of orientation. This is a big piece of obviously our program. This is a big complement of, of our services and service to many, many students. We just wanted to bring some attention to this ahead of just sort of dumping in front of you a document that is pretty extensive. So, so thank you for your, your time and your patience tonight.
Sure.
If I can jump in. I, I love co-teaching as a best practice, especially for, for this population. But there absolutely, of course, is the concern about the budgetary effect on, on staffing. Having, having previously during the budget discussion said, said that it's great to increase our special education capacity, that that actually is good for the budget. But this is obviously, you know, a direct, you know, you have more people in the classroom, and that's more people that you need to, that you need to hire. One thing I'm curious about though is, are there potential savings, because since, since we're thinking about this in conjunction with the new school building project, are there potential savings from consolidation that we would not otherwise realize if we were still trying to pursue co-teaching in separate buildings? Or is it just, there's just a number of students, and the number of students drives the number of staff that you have? Or are there any potential efficiency benefits of being able to be, have more people in, in a consolidated building?
I, I'll be honest, I think feel like I'm probably premature answering that without looking at the numbers. Typically, numbers drive, right? But placement of students in classrooms also drive staffing. So I would have to be honest, honestly look at that to answer that question honestly. Otherwise, it's a little bit of a shot in the dark. Yeah.
Mr. Fennelly.
Thank you. And for the report, this is, it's been, it's been helpful to sort of go back and review it, right? Because it's been since 2019. So this is great. I, you answered most of the questions I had, but one-
Wrong.
Well, so, one of them was early in the presentation, back around like slide five.
Okay.
Can you refresh my memory? We talk about-
Go back.
Rate of eligibility-
Yes.
And how it was nineteen point five in seventeen, seventeen point four in nineteen, seventeen point, seventeen in twenty-two. Why is the lower number better?
So it's not so much lower, it's being in comparison to districts with similar demographics, and that's kind of really where, where the goal is. So when we look at nineteen point five, we were in comparison of districts like Fall River, Lawrence, who have different needs, potentially have maybe resources stretched a little bit thinner. And so that becomes the concern. Their, their concern when they did this was that we were picking up students for whom maybe there should have been on a 504 plan, which is hence the recommendation for 504 training, or students for whom shouldn't be on an IEP that just might be having difficulty. The other concern being, we didn't have kind of really well-run IST process and use of a live de-cap document. So special ed, the concern becomes from their review, the only game in town for anybody that needs support, which is a misuse. And I know sometimes people think, oh, my student needs help, they need to be on an IEP. Special ed exists because a student has a disability and then meets all the other criteria. It is wrong to identify a student as being a special education student if they do not have a disability. So I think sometimes have, people have difficulty with it. So it's not like we would never want this number, it should never be, you know, zero if, if that's what people are thinking, right?
Right.
But it should be consistent with other districts that have our similar makeup, our similar size, and not with districts that don't, don't have the same resources that we have, that have maybe different student population, different needs in the community.
That's helpful. Thank you.
Sure.
Mr. Smaha.
Yeah, thank you. Again, I echo what Mr. Fennelly just said. Thank you for all of this. The part that I just wanted to focus on quickly was the co-teaching thing.
Yep.
I am, like, I really, I was really happy to see that in there. In my own experience teaching, like, like at my school, I'm lucky in my subject area of ELA that the majority of teachers in English at my high school, it's a co-teaching model. I'm not one of them, but I'm like one of, you know, there's, there's many. And anyway, it's, I, I see the impact that it has on students. And I think that it's important to understand that it's, it's there as a, as a, it's going to help the students who are on IEPs, but it also helps the students who are not on IEPs in equal, well, maybe not equal ways, but in, 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 in lots of ways as well. So that, that when you have, you know, a gen ed teacher and a special ed teacher, you know, it's not like the special ed teacher's like, I'm only going to work with these six kids who are, who are on the IEPs. And not, no, they're going to be strategizing with their teacher on the whole class.
Yeah.
And a lot of that expertise from a special ed teacher is really going to help out, you know, students who are not on IEPs and vice versa as well. So I just, I'm really excited to see that. And I fully, fully support it. But I do hear what Mr. Rags now saying is, it is a financial commitment.
Yeah.
And I think it, I think in some ways it ties back to what we were talking about with the budget where this, you know, the budget has been this, you know, sort of status quo. And if we are thinking of doing new innovative things that are really going to help our students, that is going to involve a different sort of financial commitment. Because when you talk about increasing co-teaching, you really are talking about increasing the number of staff. And that is going to have, and if we're in the, you know, the people business, like, that's going to have a direct impact on the budget. But I think if we want to do the things that are going to be best practice, going to be the things that really make Wilmington a, you know, a place where kids get the very best education, that we might have to make some of those, you know, financial decisions, you know, put our money where, where, you know, where our mouths are, I guess, on this. So I'm really excited about it, but I know that it's, this is a big, a much bigger deal than just saying, oh, let's put a couple of teachers together. One question that I have about it, you're thinking about a plan, is there a particular grade level or area that you're thinking of, oh, let's start here-
Right.
Kind of see how it goes, and then maybe build it out. I don't know if we're there yet.
I mean, that's really why we're, I think we, rather than just saying, we're going full and full co-teaching-
Yeah.
For us, to determine kind of what we need and what that's going to look like, and how many students we would be really talking about that would benefit from it. What is the profile of students that benefits from co-teaching also? And what do our services look like for those kids? It's really going to take us to identify pockets of your early adopters. Some of that is already happening. Generally speaking, it's actually across the board. So we have a few at the elementary, a few at the high school level, and kind of start to pilot it that way. I think that's kind of the next step for us, in addition to the development of a, because we want to see kind of what gets us caught up, right? What are the things that we need the professional development in? Things like structure, time of day, co-planning together, like, all the things that maybe we don't think about right out of the gate. So I would love to do that while we were, kind of expand that while we are writing kind of the action plan over the next few years.
Okay.
The action steps over the next couple of years.
But I, I think, not to belabor this, but I, I think it's important to note that, you know, that we can't answer right now how many staff may, what the economy of scale will be in a new facility. But there's no question in my mind that if we are pre-K to five, under one roof, e- even pre-K to three, the, the ability for us to better utilize our staff as opposed to our current model spread over so many schools is just going to be far more impactful and far more beneficial. And it's not to go on record to say we're going to absolutely be able to save, but we're going to be able to have greater flexibility in the, in the utilization of staff, including if the co-teaching model is the, the direction that we go, as opposed to trying to deliver such a program over our structure right now-
Right.
-of six elementary schools or three, you know, on the one side of town, so.
Also for related service providers. I mean, just looking at, if we were to move six of the eight strides classrooms to this one building, it changes where the PT goes, it changes where the OT goes, it changes, instead of being at the three elementary, the middle school, high school potentially, the V-CBA's caseload changes, right? So, you know, I think the, having condensed facility changes all of that, you know, saving travel times, saving multiple building, kind of all the other things that we don't realize eat into their day.
Mr. Turner.
So if this is going to be in the educational program, I don't need it answered tonight because I, I can read it. But the, the question I would have on this is to kind of see now versus what a co-taught model would look like. I mean, pick a grade, grade three, we have six general education classrooms, we have one strides classroom, we have some ELL and stages, and how, how would that look in the co-taught model, just A versus B, to better understand the full impact of the program and, and in that way? Again, if it's in the program, we don't need to touch on it here, I'll read it. But if it, if it's not going to be there, either doing it separately or, or addressing it tonight-
We may need to do it separately.
Okay, that's fine, yeah.
Yeah. But, but it's something we need to flush out-
Yeah.
Again, but it was just the, in the spirit of, this is, I go, this is the difficult part for us too, and I, and I respect where you're sitting. We have to put this all on paper, but we want to at least signal that this is an interest that we have. Obviously, we need your support, but that can come later. And we can, we can flush those things out as we go down this journey of, of building this building.
Okay. Thank you.
All right. If that brings us to the end of the superintendent's report.
Thank you. Perhaps the longest in history, but that's-
I might have taken up the time.
Thank you very much.
I'm getting an email from Paul.
You have no idea, Alice.
You already have it.
I've been at the table seventeen times, all right.
You've been writing it right now.
Past tense.
All right. Next is public comment. Mr. Fennelly.
Thank you. No signups in advance. There were a few public comments in the packet, but of course, we will open the meeting to public comments. And there are none. Thank you.
Okay. That brings us to item eight, new business. And first item of new business is the Wilmington Middle School School Improvement Plan.
Thank you for your patience, folks. And we, we, we are finalizing our school, presentation to the committee of the school improvement plans for the current year. And so this evening, our middle school is here, and Dr. Quirk and guests. So thank you, folks, for your patience. I know it's been a long time waiting, but we appreciate your patience and for being here tonight.
So I have two members of the school advisory council of the middle school, so.
My name is Justine Miveros, and I'm a mom of a current seventh grader at the middle school.
And I'm Bonnie Garassi. I'm the reading intervention teacher at the middle school.
The council, we have four members besides myself on the council, so an additional staff member and an additional parent, but they volunteered to be with us tonight, so. Okay, let's see. So last year, if you remember, we had a scheduling committee that was comprised of a few teachers, as well as some of the CTLs, myself, Christine Elliott, and a representative from AMLE, the, it's a national organization for middle schools. And we were, they were, they came here, actually in this room, for three days. And we looked at data, and it was how we decided to make some changes for the schedule. One of the activities and things that we did was come up with these common beliefs. So at Wilmington Middle School, we believe that everyone has strengths and areas of growth that do not define them, but help to make them who they are and what they have to offer. Relationships are important, as well as all staff and students will be challenged and held to high expectations in a safe and supportive environment. We also believe that collaboration is essential and that all students will learn the support of the learning community. That picture is from our first day of school and our sixth grade assembly. The assistant principals hold grade level assemblies. And that was our sixth graders. So this next slide here is just some facts of the middle school that I thought were important to talk about. Our enrollment for this year is, sixth grade is two sixty-seven. Grade seven is two oh six, two oh four, sorry. Grade eight is two thirty-three. It's, it's fluctuated a little bit. We've had some students come in to the district as well as leave the district, but we're, we're hovering around seven oh four pretty consistently throughout the year. One important thing I think is important to note with the schedule change and some of the programs that we've changed, this is the highest number that we've had ever, to my understanding, is that currently we have six hundred and eighty of those students are enrolled in a world language course. So one of the goals of the schedule change was to provide more opportunity for students to take the variety of courses that are offered in the UA wheel. And there was a shift with world language, but there's definitely more students in the, in those classes than ever before, which is great. In the fall of twenty twenty, of this past fall, we conducted our panorama survey of Wilmington Middle School students. So if you remember, there's technically six categories in, in the panorama survey this year. And we currently saw an eighty-eight percent. That is an increase of ten percent, or ten, ten percent from the previous spring. Across all of the data, we increased, but the sense of belonging is definitely the one where we increased the most. So I thought that was important to note. Our math MCAS, fifty-two percent of students at WMS were proficient or higher on the MCAS in twenty twenty-three. This is a ten percent higher than the state average, which I thought was important to note. Still room for improvements, but in math, we're, we're doing, we're doing pretty well. And I ready, the, the number of students reading mid or above grade level increased by fifty-one. The number of students reading three years or below grade level decreased by forty-seven. From, and this, when I say these numbers, this is from our fall. We take, we take three benchmark assessments, one in the fall, one in the winter, and we'll take another one in the spring. And that's the change just from the fall to, to the winter. So, which I think is important to note. And Bonnie is one of our reading specialists, so definitely kudos to Bonnie. So our first school improvement goal is to review and improve current practices regarding the schedule, attendance, and grading policies. So we are going to analyze the current grading policies implemented across teams and grade levels to identify both similarities and differences, to align the practices uniformly across the entire school for enhanced consistency and fairness. Our second piece is that it would hope to improve school attendance by fostering regular communication across grade levels, including students, parents, and guardians, and staff consistently and collaboratively. And we will also examine the existing schedule model to assess whether students have adequate access to the unified arts programs, as I mentioned earlier. And the evaluation aims to identify any potential shortcomings and determine if adjustments are needed to enhance, enhance student access, ensuring greater opportunities for participation in program offerings. That was a mouthful. So when we talk about the measurable outcomes for each one, our goal is that for the next two years, that we will analyze what is currently being done across the teams, right? We have three teams of challenger, discovery, and explorer across, and then look at for each subject as well as each grade, and see where there's any differences, and to make sure that we are being as consistent as possible across the two. I know, it's also to add with the vertical alignment with the high school, they did a whole study and piece with the grading for equity, and I hope to- a whole study and piece with the grading for equity, and I hope to be able to do something like that too, as well, so it's the start of that. Consistent policies, we hope to have a 5% increase in attendance. So our attendance rate has improved across, and you, and you might think this is, you know, I said 5%. Currently, for, well, for last year, we had a 94.6% attendance rate. Where I, I want to see the increase specifically is that the state defines chronically absent as being 10% of the school year, which is 18 days, right? We are, last year's number was that we had 35% of our students were considered chronically absent, I want that number to go down, right? So as much as I'm saying 5%, it's, it's, it's here where I'm looking for the biggest gain, is what I'm hoping. The average number of absences per student is 9.7 from last year, so I'm hoping to get that number down. If we get the chronically absent numbers down, we will have, we'll see a better increase across all of them. And even more so, chronically absent of, you know, they look at 10%, and then they have a 10, a 20, 20% number, I'd like both of those numbers to go down, and that's, that's where I'm looking for the increase specifically. A set, and so the schedule changes, a set of recommendations that guide changes, adjustments to the unified arts program for the fall of 2026. So as much as this is a two-year plan, and we do things, and we, I'd be able to present, like at the next, the spring of 2025, it really would be implemented for the fall of 2026, if that makes sense, what I'm saying. So, you might think, well, that's more than two years, but that's, that's where I'm looking for that change to happen. Just want to make sure I'm... I bring all my questions, okay. For our school improvement plan goal number two, over the next two years, Wilmington Middle School will review and enhance its current practices regarding the implementation of intervention, so our wind block specifically. With the implementation of the intervention taking place in the wind block, students' performance, so would like to see it, and our goal is that it will increase on the math MCAS, as well as establish formal systems for routinely reviewing social, emotional, and behavioral data to pinpoint students requiring intervention. One of the things that we're going to start to see with the wind blocks is that we'll have, like, studies, small groups for, with, with our counselors, that students might be joining them for that, and create an opportunity for teachers to collaborate across teams and vertically to evaluate, evaluate the structure of the wind block and share what has worked most effectively. So, at the beginning of the school year, we, along with the assessments of the fall, winter, and spring benchmarks, we also have data meetings where I meet with the teachers, along with Christine Elliott and some of the CTLs, and we go over the different data of the I Ready assessment, as well as, we have IXL, and we use that for our math assessments. We also look at MCAS, as well as the panorama data at, at these meetings. So, getting the, the thought of even just looking at data and getting the teachers to look at it more consistently is, is really what we're trying, I'm trying to do here, and that, you know, as much as we won't, might not have these formal meetings that take a whole half a day, which is what's, we're doing right now, that it's just becoming more of, of the conversation, is, is where I'd like to see that. So, when we look at our measurable outcomes, a 10% decrease in partially meeting for ELA MCAS, that's where, you know, I'd like to see more students in the meeting category, so taking from that category and moving up. A 10% decrease as well for math MCAS. An increase in SEL interventions, so looking back at the panorama data, making sure that, using that as our benchmark to see an increase in our, with those small groups that I mentioned previously. And then, one of the things that, through the, throughout these meetings with myself and Christine Elliott, with the teachers, is develop, you know, cataloging what is working in, in, in wind block, and, you know, what successes the teachers have seen. I know that the, so today, tonight, I would just be giving more of a high-level piece of this, but that I, I believe the plans would be to come back and talk about more wind, a wind block in a more detailed time, but not tonight. So, you know, one of the things I'd like to highlight tonight specifically is the, the diagnostic results, just to give you an idea, right, of, of one of the things that I've seen, and again, kudos to Bonnie here, but when we look at the fall data, 25% of our students were scoring mid or above grade level, which equates to 167 students. We've already seen an increase from the, from the fall to the winter with, now that being 32% reading at higher than, than where they should be on grade level with 216 students. The flip side, at the other end of the spectrum, is the decrease of students that are reading below grade level. In the fall, we had 18% with 123 students, and from the winter data, we have, that went down to 14% with 96 students. So even in the short period of time, we're seeing success in that area, is one of the, the points that I'd like to just bring up about that. And our last goal here is to improve upon the school culture. Conduct a root cause analysis to identify why some students, staff and students indicated feeling unsafe in the spring 2023 culture, climate survey to determine potential causes and solutions, and then also to expand student and staff recognition initiatives to foster a positive and inclusive school culture by adding staff recognition and additional student recognition. So, attend, what I'd like to see here with the measurable outcomes is a 10% increase in staff and students feeling safe. So when we think about that from that survey, if you remember that survey, AMLE helped to administer it, it was, you know, when you even just hear the word "safe," it, it has a variety of, it's not just the physical safety that we're talking about, it's that the students feel safe, they feel safe to be able to engage and take risks, and they also feel emotionally supported with, with the word "feeling safe." That means something different for the staff, as well as it means something different from, for the parents. So I'm work, plans to work with our school safety committee, right, for the building-based committee to help try to get more information specifically on what each group means, right? With the staff specifically, we're not doing an anonymous survey, so we'd be able to then take, go in and, and, and hold small groups with, with teachers that might answer in the same way, so we can really dive down and find out what they mean and what it is that we're, where we'd like to see. Looking at that data too, from that survey, you had to look at the standard deviation number two, right? And so when you, standard deviation is the variation of, of a specific number. We, we didn't do badly on, on those numbers, right? They were, in some cases, we got green, like, if you remember the, the specifics, it was that green was great, yellow was warning, and, and red was, okay, a huge improvement. It was that, and with the staff, the standard deviation was a lot closer, the thought was that they worked together, that they're, you know, more in, connected to each other. But however, the student and the parent data was definitely a higher standard deviation, even though the numbers themselves weren't that score. So, that's where we really want to dive in and try to find out where the, the range is, to truly understand what is being meant here. And then, the last measurement piece here is that increase in sense of belonging. God bless you. So, I'd like to see that the results increased by 5% here, right? So we, we did increase by, from 78 to 88%. I'd like to see if we can get up by the next, the spring of the following year, up to 93%. I think it's having more of those grade level activities, as well as hoping to start more recognition of students with, you know, the things that they're achieving, which includes attendance, those that are doing great with coming to school, right? Because that's really the first step in, in trying to be successful. You'll be seeing some of those things coming out this spring and, and continuing into the fall and, and into next year, that I'm hoping that the students, that number will even increase even higher, and they have a greater sense of being part of the Wilmington Middle School community.
Thank you very much. Questions and comments from the committee? Dr. McGoldy.
Thank you. So, I, I think the initial goals read really well, so thanks for sharing those and everything. I'm just going to kind of bounce around a little bit, around one and two, if that's okay. So with number one, thank you for sharing some of the information about the attendance rates and everything like that. I was just kind of curious, any reasons why you think the attendance rates are low? And what are some of your ideas or plans to boost the attendance?
So, I do think that, and there, I'm working with other administrators across the district to be more consistent with our messaging to parents about the importance of attendance.
Yep.
You know, sixth grade is really, in my opinion, the first year where it's, it's more on the student than it is necessarily the pa, like, when they're younger, it's the parent, whether they bring them in or not, right? And it's really just fostering that it's important to come to school, right?
Yeah.
And, and that understanding. So, you know, in the younger grades, I can see more communication with the parents, just understanding the importance of attendance and understanding that, you know, just coming to school is the first, first thing that they can do to get, to have their students be successful. When they start reaching the middle school age, you know, it's, they might be giving their parents a little bit more of a hard time.
Sure.
Right? And so, it might be that the parents have already left for work and making sure that they're getting on the bus themselves and things of that nature, right? So, when I have attendance meetings, one of the things I try to do with the parents' consent is then have a meeting with the student, right? So sometimes parents, I try to take away the, the argument for them, right?
Yeah.
They might, so it's like, I'm the bad guy, right? I'm telling mom or dad that this is important, so, you know, and I try to explain it to them that coming to school is their job, right? And if I was absent this many times from my job, then I'd probably have a meeting with my boss over there, right? So, you know, just trying to get them to understand that we're here to help them, right? And that, that it's just important just to show up is really, I know it might be hard, but it just might be important. It's also diving into why they're, you know, them not feeling well can be, mean a variety of things.
Yeah.
And trying to understand that too. So, I think having more attendance meetings is my goal this year. I also, we, the, the letter too, that we sent out, you know, trying to just stress the partnership between the school and the parents. So I've, I've found some success with that so far this year, so I'm hoping that it will continue, and I know that we're looking at it as a district.
Okay, great. So it's kind of like treating it on a case-by-case basis, trying to understand what the root cause is, and then addressing it, so, yeah, no, I think that's a great plan. And then, moving on to goal number two, great to hear that you're starting to see some positive effects this year in the math and reading scores, that's, that's awesome. Hopefully we'll continue to see that progress. I wanted to touch on aligning around the grading, so something I, I've just heard anecdotally, it's not only grading, but a workload may also be inconsistent in the houses. Anecdote, so, I, I just kind of want to bring that up, is like, you know, wondering if you feel that's accurate assessment, and if, if so, would that be part of this goal at all?
Yes, it would be. It, I absolutely think that, you know, I, I know that they work, the teachers work very well as the teams, and I know that there's the vertical, the horizontal alignment with, like, the departments, right? But also making sure it's vertically aligned, you know, I, I think it's not just, you are correct, it's not just the grading, it's, it's going to be the workload too, and the expectations.
Okay, great.
Which I think is important there to, to look at, yeah.
Okay, excellent. One last question is around wind block, so big initiative this year, seems to be helping out a lot and everything in a lot of different ways. One thing that I've kind of heard a, a little bit about is, some of the students that don't quote-unquote "need" anything, what is, what are they getting out of wind block right now? And, so like, you know, for example, these are, you know, maybe you would call them like high performers or something like that, so I was just wondering if you had any thoughts on, you know, since granted it is new for wind block, we're just learning this, what you, maybe you would do differently, or if anything at all, for these kind of subset of students?
Sure. So, you know, this, with this being the first year of really implementing it, that's, that's one of the things coming out of the data meetings too, is like this piece, but I think it's important to note that high performer, it depends upon the measurement that we're using, right? We've heard how our MCAS scores are lower.
Yep.
But then, my honor roll is higher, right? So that's one of the reasons why to look at the grading practices.
Yeah.
So, when we look at a student, we're, of course, we're looking at their grades, we're talking with the teachers that they have, right, on their team, but we're also looking at their MCAS history, right? And sometimes it doesn't line up, right?
Interesting.
With, with that, you know, they might be an honor roll student, but they're partially meeting, so why is that? And, and don't get me wrong, look, as a former teacher, MCAS can be great, and it can also be the bane of your existence, right? It can be that, you know, it's a line in the sand, it's two days for each subject, and, you know, this year for eighth graders, we have four tests, right? So God help them for the last one, right? It's going to be a long testing season.
Yeah.
So, there's a variety of factors that can, can affect that one line in the sand, right? But I think it is, it is a measurement that we should use. So when we look at those things, like, why is it that someone that gets a 95 in math is partially meeting on the MCAS? Why is that, right? And maybe that's where we need to give them some more help because they're anxious on a test, right? Or, you know, so that's why, maybe they've been absent, and we need to make sure that they're caught up on the pieces that they missed, right? So, I would say that there are things that every student needs, okay? And so, honor roll is not, you know what I mean? So I think it's that we really need to think about what a high perform, like, what we're talking about there.
Yeah.
Because we're talking about a whole bunch of different measurements when we're, when we're meeting those data meetings.
Yeah.
Just to, because we've talked about this, Dr. Quirk, right? As you're, you and your, your staff are settling into this new program, you are actively looking at and exploring, correct me if I'm wrong, ways to, for those students that may not need interventions in the same sense of others, that you're looking for opportunities and avenues, correct?
So, yes, so, there's also that piece too.
Yeah.
So, there are students that, yes, that fall into that category of the high performers, we're looking into different ways that we can stretch for them.
Yeah.
You know, the, one of the programs that we, that we were able to get for the majority of the school year is called IXL. It's an online platform that we use for our math diagnostic. It goes up to 12th grade, based upon the Common Core, which is not directly reliant to Massachusetts, but for the most part, it aligns. So, in that, in that, we have access for math, English, science, and social studies. So if we have someone that's just even really interested in science, we can do some things with them where they can extend, right? You know, and so, and there's other things too that we're looking at, and I, and I would, I would go into more depth when we, when I come back and meet.
Sure.
But it is one of the things, as Dr. Brandis mentioned, that we're exploring as well.
Okay, great. No, thank you. That's all my questions, but thank you for answering.
I'll jump in with a few things here. First of all, thank you for, thank you for the thoroughness of the plan, and it's, I appreciate the clear indications of what you're trying to achieve with this, the outcomes that you're hoping, hoping to accomplish, because it makes it, you know, easy to think about what kind of steps that you're, you know, going to, going to take to implement these, based on these outcomes that you're looking for. You just started to address this a little bit, about the consistency of grading, that it's not just about trying to be consistent across grades and teams and houses and so forth, but also consistent with our other external assessments. Because I think that that's something that really is, has come, come forward, which you, you just mentioned, that, you know, people, people making the honor rolls, getting straight A's, and then you look at some of their MCAS performance, or even some of the other benchmarking assessments that we give, and the performance just doesn't seem to, doesn't seem to match. And I think in middle school in particular, I mean, this is true to some extent also at the high school, but in middle school in particular, the grades are so much less important, they're not like on your transcript, they're not your GPA for applying to college, and that trying to get, make sure that our parents are really getting accurate information based on their grades of like what their students know and can do, I think is, is really important, because if you just, you know, if your student is getting high honors and just kind of like sailing through their classes, and then you, you know, you receive your MCAS report or other information from, you know, from some other kind of assessment that just doesn't seem to match that, then you really kind of wonder, well, maybe there's more... that just doesn't seem to match that, then you really kind of wonder, well, maybe there's more work that needs to be done in certain areas here. And so I think that trying, trying to get as much alignment as we can between the way that we're grading and, you know, what, what else we're seeing, whether it's from like, you know, NAEP results when they, you know, when they take NAEP and MCAS and so forth. Consistency is really hard to get across a school because it's not an algorithm that's doing the grading, it's like people. So it's, it's a, it's a difficult challenge, but I'm glad that this is something that we're, that we're looking at and tackling. For the attendance issue, I was also really glad to hear the different areas of focus that you have, because if you just try to look at one top-line number that just says, "Across all days of school and all students, we just want this number to go up", it doesn't really get it where the most impact is. It's, like you said, it's like those people who are chronically absent, that's really where the, the educational impact primarily is. And so I think it's great that you're also kind of slicing it a little bit and focusing on particular, on particular areas. I wanted to ask about the MCAS, because that was a question that I had, getting into goal two. Those increases that you're hoping to see, is that kind of just across all students? Or are there particular areas of focus or populations of students that you are looking more towards, looking for that type of, those types of increases?
I was looking across all students, in particularly, in the partial, you know, partially meeting, that I'd like to see them at least be meeting at that point.
Okay, and the, the goals for 2025, I'm assuming that that's based on the percent from 2023 scores?
Correct.
Since we don't have the 2024 scores yet, so presumably you're thinking over that two-year period from 23 to 25?
Right, and knowing that MCAS scores, as much as we might get raw scores in the spring, or take the, take the assessments in the spring, we don't get the real scores until the fall, too, was where sometimes you might see the fall of 2026 there.
All right, and I have two more things. One was just a timeline. On the schedule changes, it, so in, in goal one, it talked about implementation in the fall of 2026. And I just want to make sure that I'm thinking about the timeline correctly, because that seems a long way off. That we're in the, you know, 23-24 year right now, so next year is 24-25, 25-26.
It's the 25-26.
Okay, so, all right, so that's, I just, I just wanted to clarify that, because that did seem a little bit pulled out there. All right, so pull that back, so you're actually talking about fall of '25, the 25-26?
Yes, knowing that we'd be having these changes, and they'd be implemented that fall, which is 25-26.
Right, thank you. And then lastly, on the SEL initiatives, so this is, in particular, the increase in SEL intervention, so looking at the measurable outcomes of that aspect of goal two. So it says, "The number of students receiving interventions for behavior and social, emotional support will increase and will be tracked through Panorama." Can you clarify that a little bit for me? Because, sort of just as, as written, this sounds as though we're going to consider it a good thing that more of our students need social, emotional interventions. And I don't think that's probably what we're, what we're getting at.
That students, more students will get the intervention that they need, and that our Panorama scores will increase is ultimately the hope.
Okay, so this is, it's kind of, it has to be taken with an assumption that students who have these social, emotional needs, that they will be identified and that interventions will be, will be put in.
Using their scores from Panorama.
Okay. Great, thank you. I will subside. Mr. Turner?
So, thank you, and thank you both for coming this evening. First of all, you, you've alluded to it, and I, when I was looking at this, I also looked back to last year. And so there's some pieces of that, that, that I'm certainly curious to get the follow-up on, things like the evolution of advisory, the implementation of WIN, and some of the data points around WIN, such as the, the number of students who were identified needing intervention that weren't previously getting it, because they weren't identified directly through an IEP or 504, but could benefit from some of the tier-two sort of interventions that could now be available in WIN. So that sort of data would be really interesting, and as also a follow-up to last year's intervention improvement plan. But then specifically to this one, what I really do like is, I think, in goal three, where you talk about students feeling safe, that's the type of thing where it can be either emotionally or academically, or in a number of different ways, that if they're not feeling safe, they may not be coming to school. And so if you're able to identify that and really get to the causes of why students don't feel safe in the building, that that could have a direct impact and provide a lot of benefit towards attendance. And so linking those two goals, I think, is, and it's really good to see them together, but then to think about whatever is gathered out of that third goal, wrapping it back into the, the focus on attendance, because it is critical to be in the building to, to go through the learning process. So I liked seeing those two pieces together particularly, so thank you.
Other questions or comments? All right, thank you very much.
Thank you all, and as Dr. Quirk said, we will have a follow-up with regards to Wynn Block and the new schedule at a date in the future. Thanks, folks, for your patience tonight. Thanks for being here.
Tracy should just leave this here.
Good night, thank you.
All right, so let me just get a sense of the committee here. How, how are we doing? Do we want to power on, or does anyone need a short, a short break? All right, I guess we'll just keep going then.
I could say either move something to another meeting or just go through it. There's no sense in taking a break at this point.
We need more coffee.
Well, I mean, I think that the SEEM budget is going to be quick, and I think that the policies should be quick. So let's, let's go through those and see, and see where we are. All right, so.
Yeah, as quick as we can be. This is here for informational purposes. It also, as you know, we're a member of the SEEM Collaborative. As superintendent, I sit on that board, as do the other member superintendents. We are required to submit to our school committees the annual budget and tuition rate for the upcoming year, as well as an annual report. So the cover memo references the respective regulation for that, and the accompanying information is in the packet. You do not need to vote or take any action on that. This is, again, just informational, and I'm happy to answer any questions if I can for members of the committee.
Mr. Turner? Super quick one, I promise. What it says on second or third page down is that we have five students in SEEM currently, and that's five of the 53 that we have as outplaced students. So that's the portion of, of our outplaced population that's involved in SEEM.
Yes.
Okay, about 10% of that student population, sorry. Yeah, thank you.
All right, other questions or comments?
That was quick. I told you it was a quick question.
All right, quick, quick question.
Somebody else might, you know, throw things at me.
Okay, so that brings us to policies for first read. So thank you to the Policy Subcommittee for preparing these revised policies for us. They mostly seem to just be cleaning up a little bit of language, references, and no substantive changes. Are there any comments, thoughts, or additional changes that members of the committee would suggest any of these policies? Mr. Smaha?
Yeah, I have on, and I'm trying to, hold on, let me look at my notes. On the policy, the evaluation of professional staff, there's just one little thing where I saw that the change from chairman to chairperson, but I know in some of our other documents, it's just changing to chair. So I don't know if that should be changed to just chair.
That was me.
Yeah.
Yeah, you're right.
Well, except here, well, I mean, it says, in this particular one, it's referring to like a department chair, not, I think when we refer to the chair here, that we say just the chair, but I think when we refer to, I don't know, but I'm indifferent.
I think chair works better. I, I think I agree with Jay on that, that we talk about like the team chair, department chair, chair of a committee, so I think that that's a cleaner way. So, is, any objections that we make that edit?
No.
During chairperson into chair? All right.
Catch, Jay, thank you.
You guys make the edits on those.
Yeah, I'll fix it. I can fix that one, yep.
All right, so we'll make that change, and any other edits to any of the other policies besides the ones that have been made? Okay, then we will pass those along to our second read at our next meeting. And again, thank you, Policy Subcommittee.
We are moving, right? Settle me alone.
We are.
That brings us to old business, which is the 24-25 calendar.
So, thank you. First off, I do need, I want to bring to the committee's attention something that I have said, I think during our last conversation, which I, I was incorrect about. I stated that, that contractually, we had language in our contract relative to the need to have the Friday before Labor Day off, as well as the.
Good Friday.
Thank you, as well as Good Friday. I stand corrected. I was, I was wrong about that. I could have sworn that I saw that language somewhere, but I searched, another searched, and it could not be found. It is true, that being said, that for, for a very long time, a very long time, the district has approached both of those as days off, but neither here nor there, that's not, it's not a contractual matter. So I do want to, I do want to point that out. There are two versions of the calendar for your consideration, and let me just try to highlight, I think, the salient pieces to it. Both versions continue to have two professional days at the very beginning of the school year. As I've said many times before, I, I think that, I know I speak for many of my colleagues, to open a school year, to open a new school year with just one professional day, as has been done in the past, is just a tall order, and there's so much to do, mandated training and a long, long list of things. It used to be the case, I should note, that the second professional development day used to be on Election Day in a number of years past, but that was shifted, I think it was my second year here, that was shifted to the front loaded of the school year, the beginning of the school year. Both calendars still present a recommendation to have Good Friday off and the Friday before, before the Labor Day weekend off. The only variations really are, it comes back to the Wednesday before Thanksgiving, one version. Version one has, has a recommendation here of the 27th being a half-day, and version two does not. It, it has an impact clearly on the end of the school year. You can see that with the Juneteenth holiday and the prospect of, for the potential of how many snow days we have. But largely speaking, they're fairly similar calendars. And both continue to have off the presidential election on November the 5th of 2024. I just want to comment on that, because I know some have reached out on that. This is, you know, this continues, as I've shared before, with you to be in response to or as a result of the temporary use of the high school as a voting center as the precinct shifts here until the new Town Hall School Administration Building can open. It is, I've gone back to the temporary town manager about this, some have asked. The town did explore other possible locations for voting. One location that was used, I think, during the pandemic or leading up to the pandemic, was the Shriners Auditorium. There was, there was some exploration of that. One of the things that is a complicating factor there is, I guess now that area is used for parking for Amazon vehicles. I'm not exactly sure how many, or, but they are located there. So there was a complicating factor of that, and maybe some other things. I can't speak specifically for the town. And, and that's when they approached the administration to say, "Could we, could we consider this?" I know that some have shared their thoughts around, well, should school not stay open during that day? I can tell you that, you know, we have talked with Mr. Gendron here as high school principal. I know he has reservations about that from a, from a security standpoint. And I understand that in the sense of a greater turnout expected for presidential election. And, and then we do have this reality of the impact of the Town Hall, sorry, I'm sorry, the Swain Parking Lot being closed for a lot, a lot of parking, and the domino effect or ripple effect of having staff parking there and students having to go somewhere else. So it's not an ideal situation. I just want to, again, point out for, for folks here and the members of watching, this would be a one-time only, effectively, the next school year. It is the summer of 2025, in which the new Town Hall School Administration Building is expected to open. And I have confirmed with the town that they have full intention to switch all voting and all precincts over there for voting. So, so with all of that, tried to give you some options here. I know there's not a lot of differences, but to the request that was made last time.
All right, and if I can just also summarize some of our discussion from the last meeting, that the main things we talked about at the last meeting were the day before Thanksgiving, so whether that should be an early release day or a day off. We talked about whether December 23rd should be a school day, or should be, whether the break should start the previous Friday. And then we discussed Election Day on the 5th. And the committee was generally in agreement that the 23rd should not be used, that, that it was not worthwhile to try to hold school on the 23rd of that week. And so both of these revised calendars have that as a vacation day. So the, I think the only thing that was primarily left for us to talk about, and as far as I can tell, the only difference between these calendars is the day before Thanksgiving. So it's the 20, whether the 27th is a day off or an early release day. Although we can, of course, revisit any of these issues if we want to.
Shift of the last day of school.
Right, right, which, sorry, right, which therefore would shift the last day of school. So if we have a half-day on the 27th, then that counts as one of our school days. And so then our last day of school with no school days is on the 13th of June, and that gets pushed to the following week if we take the 27th off. The last day of school would then become the 16th with no snow days. All right, so, discussion. Thoughts? Dr. McCauley?
Yeah, thank you. So thanks for following up on the election day. I, I do want to revisit that a little bit, and understood kind of the constraints there and everything. I was wondering if we can maybe still have a conversation with the town about if we want to try to make the high school work, what can be done by the town to accommodate that? So one idea tossed out is maybe the high school students park at St. Thomas. Could there be shuttle buses run to the high school if people are concerned about people walking or anything like that? Because, yeah, what I'm kind of, just a little concerned about is we're, to accommodate one school, we're planning to shut down the whole entire district, you know, for the day. And, you know, I am concerned it could have a ripple effect on people trying to get childcare, and then they can't vote, you know? So we're trying to prioritize maybe one set of voters over another. And, you know, then the other issue is, you know, when I look at the calendar, you have one week in November with five days of school. So, you know, you have back-to-back four-day weeks, then you roll right into Thanksgiving, so it's a truncated month. And then, as we talked about, too, as a committee, we're just bleeding more and more into June. And, you know, we've been getting more heat days lately, you know, past couple of years, too. So that may push things out further. So, yeah, anyway, just kind of want to bring that up and then see if, you know, there can be other options from the town to see how we can make this work, find other solutions to this, because understood it as a one-time problem, and, you know, there could be some maybe other things we haven't thought about yet to solve it.
If I could just add one thing, just to, I think, to clarify. You know, some people have mentioned this, you know, the high school, the impact on voting on the, on the one school being the high school. I would also add that I think things have shifted at the Boutwell, too. It's still a voting precinct. And with, with now operating the additional school, Wildwood, on that campus, there is a lot more traffic with the staff, and we don't know what that would actually look like for staff, all the staff for the four schools at Carter Lane, along with the voting traffic to be there. We think, though, it would be pretty, it would be, it would be tight. You know, there's, there's a lot more staff that come with the Wildwood. And, and so I just point that out to say, I know that there's been a lot of, well, it's just the high school and we're, we're closing down. It's, it's a little more complicated. It's, granted, it's only two schools. Now, in the past, to be fair, we've closed the early childhood centers, both the Boutwell and the Wildwood for voting, and the rest of the school system operated.
Yeah.
You know, we, arguably, we could close the Boutwell. You could make the argument, though, that the Wildwood doesn't need to be closed. So, anyway, I just thought I would point that out. It is more than just the high school, and a little bit different challenge than in the past.
Sure, understood.
It would be a little bit odd either way to have one of the E's closed, but not the other.
Yeah.
But then also a little bit strange to not have. It would be a little bit odd either way to have one of the ECs closed and not the other, but then also a little bit strange to not have school in the, at the Wildwood for no other reason than to mirror the closing of the Boutwell.
Yep.
Other comments and thoughts? Mr. Turner.
My, my only thought on it is, is the one, I, I don't like it, but it is one year. And so I, I can wrap my head around, we do this, this one year and then it, the problem goes away basically permanently within the district. And so I, I, it's not ideal. I would certainly prefer not to close the entire district, but then trying to figure out, okay, well then what do you do with the high school? Does it drift off a day at the end of the year that no other school's open? And that gets complicated in its own way.
It does in different ways, yeah.
Make them, make them come on the Monday before December, not on twenty thirty.
That's a joke.
Mr. Fennelly.
Thank you. I, to Mr. Turner's point, I think I agree. I don't love it, but I understand it. Here's a question and I don't need an answer to this certainly right now, but I wonder if the town did explore reaching out to St. Thomas and saying, hey, we're thinking about using the high school for the election. Could the students park there? And like, did they actually sort of go through all of the motions before they said, no, we're going to use the high school and we're, you know, we'll have to figure it out? That said, if the high school is going to be used, I have concerns around the safety and security. Not that I expect anything would happen, but you're, you're now opening two of your buildings, your largest and then your youngest children to the public coming in during a school day. So while I don't love closing all of the district for the election, I think it is probably the better option than trying to make it work for one year.
It's a point of fact. I don't think, have we ever operated the Boutwell during a presidential election when, I don't, I think that the ECs have always been closed, certainly during presidential elections.
And that's the other big concern is the turnout for a presidential election, much higher than the, and that was one of the things that the town had mentioned to us that, you know, they think it's a pretty, you know, there'll be more workers, voting workers there and then just the, the stream of voters that will be going through the, the buildings.
I find myself in general, general agreement with what Mr. Fennelly, Mr. Turner have stated, which is like, I, you know, I don't love it and I'm not really happy about it, but I think it in the end might just be the, the best trade-off in front of us. Although it does make me lean towards having an early release day on the twenty-seventh, among other things. Because despite my general antipathy to early release days, again, I think that you have to sort of look at the schedule holistically. I don't like pushing the schedule into June as far as it goes and especially, you know, I get a little bit nervous looking at where Juneteenth, well, Juneteenth always falls on the same day. Looking where Juneteenth falls, like it changes. But, but looking where our calendar would end and I think I'm, I think I'm more comfortable with giving us that cushion at the end of the year. And, and this year, maybe things will be a little bit different next year when we don't have, when we don't have that presidential election looking towards the following year. But, so I might be willing to go, to go back. Well, I guess we can see how it goes. But at this point, I would support using the twenty-seventh as an early release day. Dr. McCauley.
Just a question, if I remember, we're having the high school open for the presidential primary in a couple of weeks, right?
Yes.
Okay. I was wondering if we can kind of see how that goes, because I imagine there'll be a decent turnout, right? Maybe not as high as a presidential, but probably higher than a local, off-year election, be my guess.
Doesn't seem to be a lot of competition in the primaries, but who knows?
Good question.
Uh, Dr. Bryson.
I almost don't, I mean, if this is what Dr. Rand and Ryan Genrin are saying, they would, I'm sort of like, okay. But I do think that it would probably be just fine. Like I think we have, that's the only entrance in, that's the only entrance out at the high school level. Not sure how, how I feel about the Boutwell, so I'm a little stuck on that, which makes me just say, well, it's just easier this way. But, but I agree with you. I think it probably, and at this, I think it would be fine. And I do think it would be great for the high school students to be a part of that and to see that and to know that that's happening in their building and to be present. So I'm not, I'm not opposed to waiting and seeing how that, how that goes. But again, I would love to know that, I mean, do we have numbers? How, what are last, what the numbers typically are? Do we know for our last presidential?
I think it depends on sort of what the competition is. Like if the, if the two primaries are essentially decided before primary day, I think turnout is generally low. Where if it's not, then it's usually higher.
And I mean, the last eleven, presidential, I wonder what those numbers are. So typically our turnout's not great, but is it, how was it wonderful? Like I don't, I mean, I don't actually know those numbers. So.
Please hold. Well, I mean, overall turnout nationally was sky high for the twenty twenty.
So, but I hear you and I don't disagree. So I'm sort of like, and if they could park, I don't know why, I mean, they could park at St. Thomas and walk over. I mean, that's not a very far distance. They don't need shuttle buses. People park there and then come to the Fourth of July stuff and they park at the Methodist church and walk down. So I don't know if that's, you'd have to just sort of give them a bit more time. But, but I do agree that that not having any five-day weeks is not, not great for that month. And so I too would probably be in support of the half day, which I have been very opposed to all of these years, as you know, but I think that, that's, I would be okay with adding that back in for this year in light of that closure on the fifth. Other than that, I think the rest of the calendar, I would support as is.
Mr. Turner.
One quick question. If we do the half day on the day before Thanksgiving, could you guys really informally survey the staff and say, you know, so we have some other, personally, I've always thought half days for the purpose of a day before a vacation, it's not something I'm in favor of. But I'd, I'd love to hear from the teachers. I mean, how do they feel about it and really get a decent sense of that? And then we could kind of, in some ways defer to, not defer, but certainly hear that fairly loudly for the following year's calendar and we could, we could make a decision more based on that guidance. I hear what my colleagues are saying on the twenty-seventh this year. And again, I, I don't, personally don't like the idea. But the logic here and then also getting better or different information might be good for future years.
Yeah, I, I was going to actually suggest that for your consideration, not for this calendar, but perhaps something you do for next year. I mean, clearly the, there's been some talk and Dr. McCauley's raised this around this, I think you use the term soft launch and a couple of days at the beginning and how that might be challenging for families. And clearly, the, the addition of Juneteenth changes the dynamic of the calendars in different ways around the snow days and the inevitable, you know, how that ends the year. So maybe it's something that the committee wants to consider exploring with information gathering, you know, in the fall or something.
It might, it might be, it might be time to survey the district about our general calendar policies and scheduling, which we haven't done since, I don't know, twenty nineteen?
Yeah, yes, I think so.
It's been a while, yeah, it's been a while.
So it might, you know, we, we, we did get some very useful, clear data the last time we did that, which was able to guide us in the, in the development of the calendar. So it'll be interesting to see if any of that data changes this time around.
So can I ask, I want to make sure I understand, are we, are we sort of proposing that we hold off and sort of revisit this with the town and kind of based on what the primary looks like if we can? I guess two-part question. One, are there concerns on your part about delaying the approval of the calendar a few weeks?
Well, you know, it seems to me like if this is the only lingering question, so to speak, around the presidential election, sort of unconventional, but essentially you're proving, you would be approving the rest of the calendar, which I think has some value or utility for families. But we, we can certainly delay it. There's, again, there's nothing in a policy you have that says you have to approve the calendar now.
By a certain time, right?
It's not. And, and so you could certainly wait. Again, I, I want to clarify that the town is not forcing or requiring the closure on the presidential election. Although I, I do think there was a leaning of preference for that to have sort of free and clear access in the parking lot completely emptied here upfront. So I just want to make sure to note that. And I, again, I've conveyed to you, I know Mr. Genrin has some concerns, which I understand and share some of those. So if you want to hold and wait and return to this at your mid-March meeting, I think you could. There's no reason not to if you wanted to.
Mr. Turner.
Yeah, I just, because it was actually literally brought up. In twenty twenty, there were a total of almost fifteen thousand ballots cast in town. Of the four precincts that would be here, it was almost exactly two-thirds of that. So ten thousand ballots, which would be ten thousand people coming through the building in the course of a day. That's a lot of foot traffic.
Would it be four precincts here or would it be two?
It was two at the Wild, two at Boutwell and four here.
How many were mailed in though?
No, 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 two here. So it'd be five thousand, two at town hall, two here. So it's five, five thousand, sorry.
Sort of, just to finish my point and thank you, I do still have reservations, even if we say, okay, we can, we can make it work at the high school. So school's back on. I still have concerns about the Boutwell. And so
The number of cars.
Then I think there's got to be at least some tweak to the calendar because the Boutwell's going to be closed. Everything else is going to be open, maybe not the Wildwood. So I mean, I'm not suggesting it, that we don't wait. I just don't know if we're going to get what we want by waiting. And so.
I, I don't think we're going to actually learn much by waiting. I think that the primary will have very low turnout and it'll probably just go very smoothly and easily and that we, we won't really learn more than we already know right now. And I would, I would be prepared to approve the calendar today.
And no benefit to doing a half day on Election Day? The idea that people might postpone, wait, you wouldn't have all of that at the same time. I mean, is that sort of, that, I mean, I'm just thinking in terms of after school.
Looking, oh, the high schools in session that go later.
I mean, it's quite disruptive for children. They don't have their after-school sports. They don't have, I mean, there's a lot of things they don't have, right? They don't have rehearsals. They don't like, that's a big, that's a big change for a lot of them. And so if we did a half day, so we're kind of decreasing the part, decreasing. So at one point, the lot's not really out of control, but then students are able to kind of continue on with what they would typically do, I think. I don't know. Is that, just seem
Yeah, I don't know enough to know what the pattern is of turnout in the morning and then, you know, the after work hours. I suspect it's probably pretty busy in the morning. But so, yeah, I hear what you're saying about the after-school activities and such.
But, does that, sorry, just to understand your point, if students would be here in the morning, they'd go home, then they'd come back. And so they'd, they'd be coming through the some way parking or coming or going twice during that day. And the polls are open from, I think it's seven to seven or eight to eight. It's, I mean,
Eighteen, I think.
Eighteen. And so the, so I, I'm, I actually in some ways think a half day would be worse. I'd rather, I'd rather, if, if they're going to be here, I'd rather have them be here and only come and go once, I think. But I, it's, it's going to be a good chunk of folks coming through the building.
Additional thoughts and comments? Mr. Fennelly.
I, no, I don't have any objection to continuing the conversation, but I'm going to move that we approve version one of the calendar for the next school year.
Why, could we just do it now?
We can approve it.
We could approve it now.
This is our second read anyway.
I'll, I'll second the motion.
All right, motion by Mr. Fennelly, seconded by Mr. Turner. Any further discussion?
All right. Application, sorry, before you do it in that vote. So eleven-five, no school, eleven-twenty-seven, half day, twelve-twenty-three, no school.
Correct.
That's right, which is currently reflected in version one of the calendar in our packet. All right, all, all in favor of approving version one of the calendar? And motion carry, I should say, all opposed? And no abstentions. So the motion carries four-two with Dr. McCauley and Dr. Bryson in opposition.
Sorry. All the doctors are poos, we're in trouble then. You're in favor though, right?
I don't vote, so.
Just looking for a doctor.
We're making this decision against medical advice.
Thank you.
I don't like it, but.
All right, that brings us to subcommittee reports. Are there any subcommittee reports? Dr. Bryson.
The policy subcommittee's been meeting monthly. We're supposed to meet tomorrow, but we've had to reschedule due to the snow day and having some conflict. So I think we're going to meet in two weeks. We're moving steadily through. I feel really good about our progress and you'll continue to see these at each of the meetings.
Great. It's great to be back on track and thank you for your, like, the work on that.
Thank you. And I don't believe we have any correspondents tonight. So future dates on March sixth is the next School Building Committee meeting for the MSBA project, also the WPS STEM Fair at the middle school, five-thirty to seven-thirty. That is always a fantastic event.
Yes.
You should make a point of being there if you have kids interested in any way in science. March thirteenth is our next regular session meeting and March twentieth is the next subsequent Wildwood School Building Committee. March twenty-seventh, the next school committee meeting and March twenty-eighth is our third MSBA community forum. Anything else that we missed?
Yes, since it was brought up earlier by our, our, our high school update, the twenty-first, twenty-second and twenty-third will be newsies of March. So since we're only going to meet one more time before then, get it out there.
Yeah, since we're already reaching the end of March on some of these items and Thursday, Friday, Saturday will be newsies in the Joanna M. Benton Auditorium.
Yes.
All right, that is the end of our agenda and I will be looking for a motion to adjourn. Motion by Mr. Fennelly, seconded by Mr. Smaha, all in favor. And that is unanimous. We are adjourned. Thank you for having us.
Good night, everyone.